Items that we're going to take up this evening are on the city budget. It's a series of work sessions on the city budget. But first, we'll begin with council comments and public comments. Are there any council comments this evening?
I would just say that we're thinking about our colleague Doug Berry as his father has recently passed away and he's gone to be with his family.
Yes, thank you. I had the opportunity this afternoon to be at Montgomery College as they received a very large check, $1.2 million, from the governor and the lieutenant governor. And it was a very large check, too. It was about this big. But we certainly appreciate the governor's support for Montgomery College. And I have to say, during the ceremony, there was a lot of encouragement for the governor to make return visits with other equally large checks. But he did come and did say nice things about the college and Tacoma Park and everything else. Anything else? Okay, the next item is public comment. Anybody who has a comment on any of the items, since this is a work session, you're invited to come forward. And I'd ask if you, when you come forward, if you'd identify yourself and also if you would keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
I'll be very brief. I know you have a long session. My name is Frances Fiff, 7210 Holly Avenue. And actually, I'm dovetailing on the mayor's remarks about money for the college. I'm here to report that the advisory neighbor committee for Montgomery College did have a fine meeting last week and did vote to support the college's request, which wasn't filled at the state level, for the renovation of the Commons Building. And they have now gone to Montgomery Council and they put their request in there. It has been reported out with endorsements from the Committee on Education. And the reason I'm here tonight is to call your attention to two things, two dates, actually. It's to go before the full council on May 17th. And our committee is hopeful that you will endorse this resolution, which we're forwarding to you, which I've attached here and I think I've sent by email. It's basically the resolution that was developed much earlier in the year to go to the state, but with the time it took to get the actual agreement on the language, the legislative session had run out. Those members that were on the committee agreed that this was a statement of their support for the college and would like to go forward in supporting this request. The other thing I would mention is that there were four applicants to this committee who cannot participate until they're nominated. And our next meeting will be at the end of May, on May 30th. And if it's possible, it'd be very nice to have a full complement of members. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? All right. We will move on to the first of our work session items, which involve the library. And I believe you're up first, Ellen. Yes, go ahead.
I just had a really short introduction.
Okay. And we did get the materials that you provided to us also.
Okay.
So, thank you.
I'm very happy to report increases in both our circulation and our in-house use of library materials. And we believe these are attributable to such factors as the completion of the community center and the operation of the computer center on a full 50-hour-week schedule, more in-library programming for children, more reading materials for young adults, promotional activities and gifts from the Friends of the Library, whose donations totaled just under $8,000 this past year, a more visible online presence in the form of an online book club, two new blogs and wikis, and increased Spanish language programming for children. You have a lot of information in front of you as far as our statistics and what we've done during the year, and I don't want to reiterate everything. So, at this point, I would just ask for your questions or comments.
Are there any questions? Go ahead.
I just wanted to make a few comments and just call to the council's attention is that the overall budget for the library is up by approximately $58,000. Like many of our departmental budgets, the majority of that, in the case of the library, about two-thirds of the increase amount, is attributable to personnel cost. The proposed budget does not reflect any new staffing. The increase merely reflects adjustments in employee wage rates and benefit costs. And then the difference, the remaining one-third, is basically made up of a variety of small increases in numerous accounts. When Ms. Robbins and I talked about that, there was nothing in particular that really jumped out, just a lot of small increases in numerous areas.
Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. First of all, I can thank you for the wonderful work that you do and the well-run department. I had a couple of questions, just minor things, maybe, but I know that one of the complaints that I've received about the senior room is that the motion detector, the lights are controlled by a motion detector, and when people are working on the computer, the lights will go off and some of the seniors are, have difficult, have mobility problems. And it's just waving their arms doesn't seem to be sufficient to turn the lights back on. They have to get up and move around. And I wonder if maybe we could consider putting the lights on a timer instead of a motion sensor.
Well, actually, the senior room isn't directly under our supervision. It's under the Recreation Department, but the computers in that room are. And we do, you know, open, our staff opens the room for use by people there. And I have a feeling that's probably something that's relatively easy to remedy, although I can't speak to it specifically.
My next, my next question is maybe in a similar vein, not under your control, but I get confused in the computer technology area on who does what. But I've, I know that there is a need for computer training within the community. And I don't believe we've done much computer training, other than with the seniors so far in the Technology Center. I know there are organizations that are interested in doing computer training, and in fact, they're even, they're even willing to supply their own computers to do that if we have facility where they can, you know, space where they can do it, either using our computers or their own computers. I think that would be a valuable addition to our computer technology center. And I wonder if you've given that any thought?
Well, a couple of things come to mind. The computers, and Rebecca can expand on this, the computers that are in the room now, it's pretty much a turnkey system. But there was a meeting with Rebecca and Phil and some other staff just yesterday with representatives from Montgomery Works about using the computer center at the library as a possible site for training in the future. Did you want to speak to that at all?
Also represented from Long Branch Library, because they were thinking in terms of we could do it here, we could do it at Long Branch. We both told them it's not easy for people here to get to Long Branch or for people at Long Branch to get here. So, I think we talked them into doing it as a double project, doing the same thing at Long Branch and down here, so that people who walk and live in apartments can get to it. And this would be a kind of focused computer training, because we'd be writing your resume on the computer, doing online job searches on the computer, how to do these online job applications, which are increasing problem for people, particularly ones from things like Giant, CVS, and so forth. So, we're trying to work out a system where Montgomery Works would do the training.
Well, good. I'm glad to hear that. I'm also working with a couple of nonprofit organizations to bring some of the computer training to our neighborhood here in the Maple Avenue area. But it would be nice if we could coordinate that with the work that you plan in the computer training here.
We'd be happy to explore that further. This is something that we're just, you know, we're just getting into discussions about now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the services that you provide to the community. I noted in the write-up that the library has been providing assistance to the third-grade classes and learning how to use the library. I'm curious if the public library is doing that, which everything's fine. I'm wondering why they're not doing it at the school, but I should probably ask the school that question. I also appreciate that the miscellaneous expenses in the library and the computer center are low relative to the whole rest of the budget, which means you're really accounting for things in other areas. I see supplies, services, and charges, and I assume that that's buying books and periodicals and that kind of thing.
Right. Yeah, the, give it to us in a supplement today. Supplies would be primarily books, books and periodicals, right? Reference, reference books.
And then services and charges?
I'm not sure how that breaks down, Wayne. I guess that would be everything else. We didn't initially make those divisions, but I think that would include pretty much everything else. I could go through some of the line accounts.
I'm just curious, services and charges, would that, that seems to me like a service would be like a LexisNexis service, or what is a service and charge?
I can help. Generally, I have a general comment about all departmental budgets. Services and charges are going to be any kind of contractual agreements, maintenance contracts, lease agreements for copiers, items of that nature.
And just telephone, cell phone charges. Programming and outreach, copying, some book rebinding, association dues, just a whole, anything that really isn't directly included in materials that are provided directly to the public.
Great. Looks like everything's really stable, but the percentage increase is about, if we want to, the salary cost increases. So, I think that's great. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
I have one additional question. I remember, oh, a year or something ago, we met with the TASD committee. One of their recommendations had been that the library sort of focus its resources on a particular area. And we talked about it, and I know that there were some, some good reasons not to do that. But we sort of left it up in the air that we would come back and look at it after we'd had some experience with the computer center. And in looking at this information, and also my observation of what's been happening in the building, is that it seems that the computer center, the existence of the computer center is actually leading to more use of the library. And then when I saw your statistics here, now, you don't say why you think that there's more use of the library, but that could be, I suppose, a reason. And it strikes me that perhaps having had this experience with the computer center now, it would argue for perhaps leaving the library the way it is, because they seem to be complementing each other. I see people, you know, running, if their little ones are walking, if their bigger ones, in between the computer center and the library on a fairly frequent basis. And so, it does seem that there's a lot of complementarity there. And I would, I would assume that you're seeing some of that in the library also.
Yes, very much so. I mean, we've always regarded ourselves as a full-service library, and certainly the, you know, the opening of the community center and the computer rooms is bringing in more, many more adult users as well as children. And of course, we've, we've expanded on the children's programming, so it's all, it's all working really, really well as a whole. And we think, we believe it's most successful that way.
Okay. Well, that sort of confirms what I had observed, but I appreciate that.
Yeah, I was actually one of the people who put that forward on the TASD committee. And the reason was, they were talking about what would happen if they closed the library, you know, they pushed it back onto the county. And one of the things that came out of that conversation was, we were asking, what are the things that the library uniquely provides besides that it's in the center of the city? And the things that came out were Tacoma Park history, horticulture, and the children's, it's just in the conversation.
Right.
And the children's collections. And so, we were just talking about what would happen then if that was the choice that was made by the city, and how would we preserve those components that just couldn't be replicated anywhere else? And that's kind of the, that's like the broader context of that conversation, that recommendation.
Yeah, yeah. And, but we did leave at the last time we talked about it, that we would see how the computer services meshed with the library. My observation is that they're meshing very well and leading to more use of the library, or at least more people walking back and forth down through the hallway in between.
Well, the numbers show it, too. It's more, more materials being checked out, and we are able to keep statistics on in-library use of materials. In other words, those things that aren't checked out, but are used in the library by adults and children. And, you know, actually, well, if you want to hear increases, from fiscal year '05 to fiscal year '06, circulation increased by 2.2 percent with an additional increase of 11.64 percent projected for fiscal year '07. And the in-house use of materials increased 7.51 percent during that same period with an additional projected increase for this year of 21.76 percent. So, that's, that's considerable. And while we, I think we did lose some use when there was restricted parking and all that sort of thing, I think everything is coming together now to really make the library the lively community, you know, center that it, that it should be and most generally is.
And those are always underestimates, because there are people who use the library and decide to reshelf their own books or are sitting there using their computers because we have wireless access and so forth. And that, that kind of use is not even counted.
Okay.
But one can just look around and see that the seats tend to be.
Okay, that's very helpful. Are there other questions? I think, I think no questions is good news, because I'm assuming that means that nobody has any terrible problems with the way the library is operating. So, thank you all very much. We appreciate it. And also appreciate the way that the new computer center is running. I think it's, it seems to be used on a, on a fairly regular basis. I can't think of a time that I've sort of wandered through that I haven't seen somebody in there. And often, it's a lot of people.
Rebecca deserves a lot of credit for that, full credit, really. And we're very happy with the way things, you know, are going and how smooth it is and how wonderful the facility looks. We had some staff visit from the Falls Church Library a week or so ago, because they're considering embarking on the user pool, you know, system that we have there. It's, it's very nice to be able to show it all.
So, we're sort of taking the initiative in that use of that system, aren't we?
I think so.
Yeah, that's great.
We are.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next one, we're going to look at the General Government category, which includes a lot of different areas. It includes general management, legal, city clerk's office, city council, finance.
Human resources.
Human resources. Yes, I can't even remember what they are.
Put the council under fine sheet cover.
Yeah, let's, let's.
Put the council under fine sheet cover.
That's right. You can scrutinize your budget.
Be concerned by those people who are spending all that money.
We have a number of the staff here from General Government. I'd just like to make some introductory comments, and then with the council's concurrents, maybe start with the city attorney to talk a little bit just about legal expenses. The overall General Government budget is basically about $227,000 higher than budget expenditures for '07, as is the case, and you'll hear me say this pretty much throughout this budget process, a good chunk of that is going to be personnel-related in the case of General Government, about 45 percent. Some of the other areas of increase in terms of the operating budget that I'd just like to call to the council's attention, and then if you have some specific questions, I might refer those questions to the department head. As we talked about on Monday night, we are expecting the cost of the city's audit and financial statement preparation will, will be more than it has been in the current year. When I put the budget together, Ms. Brooks and I were estimating that that increase would be about $15,000, and that's what the proposed budget reflects. As we talked about Monday night, based on the bids we have received and assuming the council awards the contract as recommended by staff, there would be some additional funding needed. Ms. Brooks can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was about an additional $4,500. Another contractual area in finance that I did want to mention, I think many of the council members are probably aware of the GASB 34 requirement. In the Finance Department budget, there is, I believe, approximately $25,000 in FY '08 to do some valuation of the city's infrastructure, which is a requirement of GASB 34, which we will fall under as part of our preparation of our FY '07 audit. There are also additional costs reflected in the proposed budget for next year for the 2007 general election. That cost is an additional $11,500 above and beyond what was included in this year's budget. And then we also have some contractual services that are proposed in the Human Resources Division of General Government in order to provide some funding for a classification study, and that amount is about $19,000. So, tried to highlight a few of the items in General Government above and beyond personnel that might be of interest to the council and that are driving some of the increase that's reflected in my proposed budget. I guess with that introduction, if, Mayor, if you're okay with this, I'd like to have the city attorney come forward and maybe talk a little bit about the legal budget. There is no change in that, but this has been an area in the past that the council has had some specific interest in. Included in your agenda packet is a summary of the city's legal costs for FY '05, FY ' '06, and year-to-date for FY '07. Okay?
Thank you. As the city manager explained, there is not any change, any increase in the projected or proposed budget from this previous year. And the good news is the legal expenses are projected to be within budget for this, this 2007 year. As is fairly typical, the preventative kinds of lawyering, such as writing contracts and advising staff and dealing with personnel matters, et cetera, is all quite predictable and seems to be going at the same pace as previous years. The part that's always the wild card is when we have some kind of more conflicted event, something that's leading to either litigation in an administrative agency or litigation in court. The thing that has been the expensive item for us this year has been fighting the Womata proposed development, and that has been expensive. And probably there will be some additional expenses over the next budget year, or perhaps even in this year, once we get the administrative record and can comment on it, and then whether we'll have to go beyond that to, to the FTA or into the courts. So, whenever we have litigation, that's the piece that's hard to budget for, but that, that is always the council's decision whether to take on these kinds of fights and these kinds of projects. I wonder if you have any questions?
I wanted to follow up on your, your last comment. I would like to be proven wrong, but I'm afraid that the issue around the Tacoma Metro is not necessarily going in an entirely positive direction right now. And I guess the question is, are you comfortable that the amount that we have budgeted, which is, what, $170,000 for fiscal '08, would cover it if we needed to do more extensive legal work and possibly took it to whatever the next venue would be on that issue? I mean, I think something's going to break in the next fiscal year, one way or the other, and are you comfortable that that would be enough to cover it?
The honest answer is, there's no way to know. But I think the idea of some kind of budget amendment process at that time, when we have a better feel for how much we need to devote to that fight, would probably be appropriate more than kind of making a projection with what we know now.
Okay.
I would also mention, and Sue, correct me if I'm wrong, but during the current fiscal year, there's also been more expenses related to rent stabilization. That process appears to be somewhat winding down, so there may be some offset between those two projects. And I guess I would echo what the city attorney is suggesting, Mayor, is that we just deal with that issue as it comes forward. As a matter of practice, I would not encourage the council to kind of budget to the worst-case scenario. And you always have the latitude to amend the budget during the fiscal year as you deem appropriate.
The other thing I would just add to what the city manager said is, although it's true that the legislative work may be going down, there've been a lot of culture cases recently, and there could be challenges to what we do going forward into the next fiscal year. So, what, what has been one kind of expense may turn into a different kind into the next, the next fiscal year. I'm not sure, I would be quite as saying when that it'll go away.
Okay. Any other questions about the legal budget? I guess this is more of a question for the city manager. I noticed the city attorney also provided us with some information about employer-provided cell phones and PDAs. Shall we ask the city attorney to stay for that item also?
Yeah, we had already discussed it. That just came over late today, and I apologize. When this item, Sue saw the memo, basically she shared the information. She had, what I would suggest, I don't know if there's any other questions about the General Government operating budget. If not, what we may wish to do is go ahead and discuss that issue while the city attorney is here. And then I'd like Abel Castillo, our IT director, to comment on some of the capital projects, but in deference to the city attorney's time, if the council's comfortable, perhaps we can go ahead and address that issue.
Do either of you want to sort of, I haven't had a chance to look at this yet. I did read the memo that you sent us.
I believe, Councilor. I believe Councilmember Siemens may have some questions about other aspects of the budget.
Oh, I'm sorry, the legal budget?
Not the legal, but the general government.
Okay.
She opened the door.
I was trying to.
I just, I noticed that you had, you know, several expenditures in here proposed that you considered to be, I don't know if significant is the word you used, but the ones that you wanted to highlight. And I just, as I look at this, if we are looking for ways where we can maybe trim the budget a little, I wondered if you would maybe suggest which of these you would set as a lower priority?
Well, obviously, we can't avoid the election costs, it's a sort of a fact of life, from my standpoint, that's a given. I think we need to move forward with the audit and the preparation of the financial statements. I mean, of the items, Councilmember Siemens said, I was trying to call out those that were larger in terms of dollars. It would probably be the funding for a classification study. Mr. Hobbs may want to make some comments, but I think if there was a desire for the council to maybe go back in, I'd probably go back through some of the individual line items and see if there's some places in a variety of accounts that we could tweak. I know Mr. Hobbs has expressed to me that he thinks the classification study is important, so...
The last classification study we did was '98, preparation for the change in the pay plans and going to pay for performance. As with anything, over that period of time, jobs change and grade structure changes. And I just want to make sure that we've got adequate descriptions of all our positions and that we're paying those positions what they should be getting. And rather than doing that piecemeal, which can become very cumbersome, it's better to do a total study of all the positions. I think it's important.
I guess what I would say, Councilmember Siemens, if we go through the budget process for any department, but I think particularly in mine, because as the mayor noted, the scope is so diverse, I would probably like the opportunity to pull together all the division heads and consult with them, rather than my making a unilateral decision for each of their budgets.
All right, I thank you.
Anything else?
On the PDA or...
It'd be interesting to see what the line item budget looks like.
No, we're working on General Government, we haven't gotten to the...
That's not this, right?
Yeah.
I think two people would have recognized.
I'm sorry?
I just said it would be interesting to see what the line item budget looks like.
Oh, okay. Anything else on General Government before we move to the legislative expenses? Okay. It sounds like it's time to move to the legislative expenses.
Yes, I think there have been, I think at least a request from at least Councilmember Clay and perhaps other council members, who wanted to have some discussion during the budget process of the city providing a personal-to-digital assistant to council members. Included in your agenda packet is just some information about the cost of the city doing so. As I indicated in the memo in your agenda packet, the cost of the actual phone would be about $449, and the monthly service cost annualized would come to about $905. Certainly, Mr. Castillo's here, if there's any questions about the technology. One of the things we distributed this evening is the city attorney had recently attended a conference, and this is not just applicable to any devices that are provided by the city to council members, but certainly myself and other members of the staff. And I guess I would turn it over to Sue if she has any comment about either the legal or the tax implications and the information she provided us.
Yeah, I just thought it was helpful for the council in making this decision about what equipment to provide to either council members or staff, that you understood sort of what goes with that decision. It's not just the hardware and the cost of the plans, but there's also a whole tax part to this, which I certainly wasn't aware of until I was at this municipal attorney's international conference. And the short part of it is, and that's why you have these materials, is that it's treated as, there has to be a very sophisticated, complete, accountable plan, it's called, for the IRS to allow these charges to be considered business expenses. And it requires the user, if it's, for example, council members, to strictly document that business use. It's not good enough to just estimate or say, well, it's mostly for the council. It really requires documentation, you know, keeping bills, keeping records, pointing out which are the personal calls that are being made. And then there has to be a method by which the city gets to quantify what are the personal calls. It could be a percentage of personal is against business. And those then have to either be counted as income on the receiver, in this case, council member, individual tax return, or there would have to be reimbursements to the city for that amount of money on a, I guess, a monthly basis. But it definitely requires a fair amount of overhead, is what I'm trying to say. There's an administrative piece to this, both for the city and also for any user. And that we certainly can't just assume that it, you know, that it's not going to be looked at. It's clear to me from the presentation that this is an area where the IRS is doing auditing. And the exposure to the city, just briefly for all of your information, of course, is whether the city has taken adequate withholdings to deal with the expense if the city hasn't. It is a major liability for the city, given the number of people who may be involved.
Can you tell me...
I just would like to point out that the billing we receive on each individual telephone number details everything, the number of minutes, and I'm certain satisfies all that. I have not had time to read all that, but skimmed it. And I think we're doing everything that's required right now. We do have a policy, and we might want to need to look at that, that as long as you don't exceed your total minutes for a month, if you make personal calls, that's fine. But if you go beyond the allowable minutes, then you have to reimburse the city for any personal calls you would make. And we do have a review process for that.
So, does the city currently have a policy that meets these standards, in your opinion?
I'm only hearing what the policy is.
I think it is. I don't know that Sue has ever reviewed it.
I haven't reviewed it.
Okay. So, we have some kind of a policy?
Yes, certainly.
And how long have we had that policy?
Several years.
How long has the city been using cell phones with its employees?
Several years, I guess, about five years. I don't know the exact date.
And how long have we had the contract with Verizon?
We've had a number of contracts with Verizon.
For cell phones and PDAs? For how long?
For cell phones.
How long have we had the PDA contract?
How long?
Couple of years, since it became available.
And what did you set up? And how many people on staff have a PDA?
Management staff has PDAs.
How many is that?
About 15.
15. And how many of these people have triggered the personal use policy?
As far as I know, none, but I would have to go back and review all the records to give you a definitive answer.
You talking about who has paid for personal calls?
I know we have paid some personal calls. Other cell phones were fully to exceed their minutes.
Okay.
PDAs, I'd have to go back and research.
And all the contracts are linked, so that the PDA function and the cellphone function are together, and none of them separate the function?
They're together. The PDA part is one contract, correct? And then there's a cellphone contract.
And that's a separate...
That's separate.
It's the same Verizon contract, just different components of the contract.
But it's a separate mechanism. What's the $75 fee that you listed in here cover?
I think I broke it down on...
Is it both cellphone and the PDA or just the PDA?
I consolidated it, your $75 cost.
It's $34 and $34, $34.99 or $34, something like that.
Okay.
Um, Joy?
Uh, let's see. So, the PDAs right now go to, my interest is if this is extended to the council, that there be kind of a unified policy that hangs together. The management staff, it sounds like we have 15 managers, and each of them have a PDA.
I think that's correct. I mean, we can certainly go back and count the exact number, but that sounds about right, Councilmember Austin.
And then do we have additional cell phones that above and beyond that 15?
Yes, certainly, some of the police staff, probably some of the Public Works Division heads, I would imagine.
I know that as a council member, I have needed things like cellphone and email access like never before. And I would like to see the council explore this as possibly part of the council compensation What I'm hearing tonight is somewhat reassuring in that it sounds like there is a city policy, there is an affordable plan, mechanism for review, all of that. I'm also sensing, though, that there's some trepidation to council members having PDAs, and I don't know...
No.
None whatsoever.
Okay. I think the city attorney had just gone to a conference and was trying to raise an issue, and obviously, we probably should have you reviewed the policy, since it clearly hasn't been reviewed by at least you, Sue, personally in some time. You know, I guess, Councilmember Austin, one of the comments I would make, and I guess it's a matter of perspective, I'm not sure I really view this issue, wherever the council comes down on it, as a matter of council compensation, I really view it as being more a case of what tools does the council feel that it needs to do your job? That's my own personal perspective, this is not a compensation issue, but that's ultimately for you to decide.
The only reason I would see this compensation is because we do get some remuneration for being on the council, and so from that money, I have paid for my expenses as a politician. Cellphone being one of them, certainly excessive email access being another. And so, I, it's fine if it's the kind of a separate entity. I think that it should be made available to council members. This is one of the most, this would be one of the most useful tools to me as a council member. And what I can say to you about trepidation is that when I got on the council six years ago, I did have a lot of trepidation about asking for things. There was this feeling that city council members were, you know, largely volunteers and very underpaid, given what the requirements were. And so, the council approached that very carefully, and we did succeed in getting something of a procedure put in place for council compensation review. So, I do have trepidation as I now publicly ask for more resources for council members, but I do think this is one of the very most useful things that probably even beyond the training budget, that is also in our packet as a topic to discover, to discuss. So, that's my position.
I think you have a question.
Did you want to do a follow-up on that, or...
No, go ahead, I'll wait.
I was just going to make sure I understood on the income tax aspect of this, it sounds very complicated, but it's IRS, so that explains a lot of it. The, but it doesn't really sound that much more complex than a city-owned car that we give to an employee, that if it's used for business, you have to keep track of that. If it's used for personal, you have to keep track of that, and there are income tax implications that are similar to what this would be, so it seems like it's not any more complex than that, and I just want to make sure.
No, no, I'm glad you said that, it's a very good analogy, but people often don't think about it when you get a cellphone, that it would be like, you know, getting a city car. And that's the only reason I'm raising it, but it's an important issue to understand, and I'm not saying I even fully understand it yet, I certainly haven't reviewed the city's ongoing policy, but my message is certainly not negative. It's not to say you shouldn't do it, it's more to say this is a factor that you should understand as you go into the decision.
Thank you.
I wanted to make a couple of clarifications about what my original request was. It was actually just for a PDA and not for a cellphone. I only want this device for my council work. If I get voted out of office in November, I don't need it anymore. So, I don't really feel like I'll have a problem with the personal use issue unless they charge me for plain solitaire, that bubble game that's on here. I don't really have any other personal use issues. But, you know, I wouldn't want the city to pay for my telephone, because I would spend way too much time figuring out my personal use, because, I mean, my cellphone is almost entirely personal use. So, you know, if they had to be married together, I would have to reimburse the city for the cellphone cost, I guess. Another issue that came up, though, was that after I did buy the device, I asked if the city could help me program it, because it's for my calling see-it-tocomagov.org account and not my MSN account and not my HUD account or anything. And they said I should call the 1-800 number for Verizon, which I did. And after 12 hours on the phone with Verizon, my PDA now works. And so, I sent the city manager a note, and she informed me that because the city doesn't actually own the device, that they can't really help me with it. And so, I guess what I would like, we pass this, is rather than have the city buy another device that they can then help me maintain, is that they reimburse me for this device that I've already purchased. The other thing that I want to say is that of all the interactions that I have had with the city, the interaction over this PDA has been the most frustrating and the most disappointing to me. I really don't feel like this is a council compensation issue. It's not pay, it's not that we get paid that much money. I spend a lot of the money that I get paid anyway, like, you know, on things that are about being a councilperson. I feel like this is just something I need to do in my job. You've heard me say recently, I'm approaching the $10,000 mark in email in the two years that I've been in office. And I happen to work in a place where I can't have access to other email during the day besides, you know, my federal account, and I really have just stretched the personal use of the federal account beyond where I'm really comfortable with it. I can't, I couldn't do it anymore, and so I finally broke down and spent $650 on this device so I could have it with me during the day. But I did want to clarify the issue about, I'm really just interested in the PDA portion of it, and I'm happy to give it back to the city at the end of my term. And that if the city doesn't own the device that I use, they can't help me and provide services to it.
I guess the question that's, leaving that sort of issue aside for a moment, I guess the question that's before the council is, are we interested in providing some kind, and we can deal with what kind that is, some kind of wireless phone and/or email to council members? I probably wouldn't use one myself, I'm old and sort of stuck in my ways before those things became available. But I don't have any objection to other council members doing it, and certainly it would be something that would make council members more accessible to their constituents. So, I don't have objection to other people doing it, and it might be a good tool for people who sort of organize their lives that way. Chris?
I guess the thought I have on this is that my recollection of the discussions that we've had in the past about council compensation is that it's been approached as essentially a way to reimburse expenses for being a council member. It's not necessarily seen strictly as just kind of salary.
Good thing, too.
And so, in that way, I guess I can feel like it is a compensation issue, and that in some ways, I'm most comfortable continuing to see it that way, and therefore, whatever tools people need to do their job, they make those expenditures, and kind of that reimbursement mechanism is the salary. That way, different things work for different people, and it all kind of comes out in wash. I kind of feel like if we get into, well, then we're going to provide some different tools, and some people don't want those, then it kind of gets into a differentiation on compensation. But I'm not real, real particular about how we deal with this. I know in my own circumstances, I'm happy with the way... I know in my own circumstances, I'm happy with the way I'm set up with the technology that I've outfitted myself with, and I knew that if I had a way to access email during the day, even though I currently have a phone, like we're talking about, it's not set up to, I didn't set it up to access email during the day, you've got to get away from things. And you can't have constant access through every method, all time, everywhere you go, and I'm happy to not have email access. If somebody really needs to get a hold of me, they call me on the phone. So, I'm happy with different people using different technologies to do their job, and compensation is through, basically, the salary we're paid.
As one of the younger members of the council, I, you know, I like technology, and I think it's neat and keen, but realistically, in my ward, and the way that I interact with my constituents, I think is different than what some of the other wards do. And I don't know that I would list a PDA as the number-one thing that would help me, the number-one tool that would help me in addressing the needs of my neighborhood. But on the other side, I agree with Bruce, I can see that other people may, other council members may need that in their ward, and I think it's appropriate. What I'd really, I guess, I wonder if there couldn't be a little budget for things that might be used for other tools or other ways by council members to do outreach or communicate with their constituents, that one council member may choose a PDA as the way they would like to use that money, and another council member might use it for a newspaper ad or, you know, flyers for the neighborhood.
I should point out, as a technology point of view, if you're going to have a PDA, you're going to want to have cellphone, because that's how you're going to get your wireless, that's how you're going to get your emails synchronized. So, when you're thinking about it, you want to have both. You just have a PDA, you're going to have to always go to a computer and synchronize it, you need to have cellphone service, cellphone data service for wireless synchronization.
But somebody--
They're both good, they have to go together.
Yeah, but if you've got a PDA for email, you wouldn't have to use it as your cellphone, you could have cellphone service through another device.
If you need a wireless service to get that.
I think, Abel, aren't you addressing the issue Colleen raised of having to reimburse cellphone usage because it would be personal use, and what you're saying is, in order for Colleen to use her PDA for business, that she, the cellphone service would need to be there for that functionality?
Because if you wanted to have email delivered to your PDA wireless.
I think we're all learning how PDAs work, right up here in the public eye.
Real time.
But to carry that one step further, you could have a separate cellphone on a separate service if you wanted to have private cellphone service and city PDA service, right?
Yes, it would just cost one.
Right. Well, where are we on this?
Well, one thing that seems a tad unfair is if there is this expense that some council members need to perform their job, that it would have to come out of their salary. I can tell you, as council member for Ward One, where we have the greatest number of voters in most elections, except for maybe Ward Three, where they're pretty close to Ward One, and we have a very active citizenry with, you know, lots of people contributing ideas and time and energy and good things, I have sometimes felt that it was unfair to have the same salary for all council members. But then, if there was this additional access issue where, in order to be available in today's modern world, I would have to fork over almost $1,500 a year, that really doesn't sit well. It seems like if the city would be purchasing these, the equipment, and then that could be passed on to another council member, if one council member, you know, or actually it could be circulated with managers, so it would be a piece of city equipment, just like city computers are, then that gives me some sense that, you know, this isn't like a personal tech gadget, it is really something the city already uses to help their managers keep in touch with each other, with the city manager, in case of emergencies, et cetera. And it would, that tool would be extended to council members who, in my experience, would heavily use it.
And I did talk to the other two council members who aren't here, and we didn't talk about the specifics of compensation or not, or that kind of thing, but they have the same problem that I have, they're both federal employees, and they don't have access during the day, and they both said that's something that they would appreciate, but that's as far as compensation.
Can I put a proposal on the table, just sort of having listened to where everyone is at this point? It seems like the most efficient thing to do, now, there's a fairness issue, obviously, but the most efficient thing to do was simply to add any council member who wanted to be added onto the city's plan, and that would cost, according to this, like $905 per person, is that what the current going rate is, including the--
Yes, that's based on our current rates.
And that would be adding any council member who wanted to be added on that way. Now, Colleen has a unique problem, which is that she's already, in the absence of a policy for this, has already purchased something. And I would be happy to have the city manager suggest an interim proposal to deal with that. But that does leave the issue that a couple people have brought up about, but does that leave other council members that don't use devices like that?
Yeah, and that's a very nice lead-in. My suggestion is that we just budget $1,000 per council member for constituent communications, those who want to do it with a PDA, be authorized to use the city plan, and those who want to use it for something else, it has to be through the city manager's office, that it obviously, the expenditure goes towards communications with constituents, and that might be, you know, flyers for the neighborhood, or, I don't know, pizzas for an event, you know, something that--
I would, that sounds reasonable, on one condition, that we don't all start publishing newsletters, please. Some towns, the council members put out individual newsletters, and they, at least in one instance, we know, they use the newsletters to say unkind things about other council members. We don't need to go down that road. Colleen.
I just want to point out that I'm not asking for the $905, because I don't want the council to pay for my cellphone, I just want them to pay for the PDA part, because it's only $34 a month, so it's like $400 or something.
Well, as I said, I would be happy, if the council wants to go in that direction, and it seems like we're sort of not sure we do at this point, but if the council wants to go in that direction, the thing I'm least worried about is sort of how we deal with a council member who's already sort of purchased a device in the absence of it. I think the council, my guess would be that the council would be happy with whatever you and Barb worked out.
Okay.
But where are we on, it seems to me the simplest thing, if the council does want to go in that direction, that we either, I mean, it seems to me we have three options. One is leave everything the way it is, and assume that if council members want more technological communications devices, they take it out of the cost, out of the salary that they receive, that's one option. The second option would just be to give people the option to get on the city's plan for people who want it, that would be the second way of doing it. The third alternative would be to sort of allocate a, I guess I would allocate $905 per person, and you could either use it to get onto the city's plan, or do something else that qualifies as communication. Now, I would assume that for someone who used it as something else, we would then have the issue that Sue is bringing up, that it would be counted as salary unless you could prove that it was used for a deductible business expense, wouldn't we? If something is given to you in cash, and you say you use it for flyers, it ends up being salary unless you can come up with a deductible expense that would cover it.
Right, it's like a fringe benefit, but it's excluded from taxable fringe benefits so long as it's entirely business-related.
If I may, and Councilmember Siemens can correct me if I'm wrong, I did not hear Councilmember Siemens saying that he thought council members who elected not to take a PDA should be provided with a cash equivalent, it was that there was an amount of money that could be used for other modes of communication, which presumably would be paid for directly by the city, just as the PDA contract would be.
All right, I'm understanding that better, thank you, I appreciate that clarification, because I did not understand what that meant.
One thing I did want to just mention to the council is when we're talking about the $905, just so everyone's clear, there would also be a cost we would include in the budget for the actual purchase of the device itself, you know, so it's not just a 905, it's obviously just a one-time cost for actually purchasing the equipment.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, okay, gotcha.
And that's a one-time cost that recurs every few years.
So, it would have to be, it's more like $13.50, right?
I would like to see that added to the budget.
$13.50 times seven, is that something that could be accommodated?
We'll put it on the reconciliation, it's just like everything else, it's not an overall large amount of money, certainly, it depends where else the council goes during the budget process, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate you saying that, because I think at this point, that's what we should be doing, is anything that's not in the budget, putting it on the reconciliation account. I guess my reconciliation list, so that at the end, we can deal with all of those things together. But I guess the issue was more, would this, this would obviously have to add to the budget of the legislative item.
Yes.
Okay.
Unless, it would add to it unless there's, like, when we get to the next item, perhaps I overestimated what the council feels it needs for training, for instance, so I don't know that it would necessarily add pending other council decisions.
Okay, all right. Are people comfortable with putting, with the way in which we're putting it on the reconciliation list? Okay, all right. Do you want to introduce the training policy?
Yeah, is there any need for the city attorney any longer, is everyone satisfied with the legal budget, I'd let Sue go enjoy her evening, if there's not.
And go off the clock.
And go off the clock, I was trying to be genteel, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
In July, the council held a work session to discuss training and conference attendance by members of the city council. For family reasons, I was unable to be at that session, but it was my understanding that at the conclusion of the discussion, the council wanted me to come back with perhaps some general parameters of what a policy might look like. Obviously, I haven't taken the time to draft a formal policy, I thought that was something we could sort of talk about this evening, and see if in general terms, what I was suggesting made sense. My proposed budget includes $15,000 in the Legislative Division of the General Government Budget for training and conference attendance by city council members. In arriving at that figure, and the city clerk and I talked about this during the preparation of the budget, we assumed that there would be an allocation of $2,000, not $200,000, $2,000 for each council member. And what we sort of looked like, looked at in coming up with that figure, is what the city has historically spent for the annual MML conference in Ocean City, there's a legislative conference that quite often the council goes to, and then perhaps providing some minimal residual funding for perhaps some local training. I know during my tenure here, Councilmember Austin Lane, for example, attended a one-day seminar, maybe a cost of like $300, to basically get a better handle on planning and zoning in Montgomery County, for instance. So, that's kind of what we looked at in coming up with the $2,000 figure. You know, a council member may elect, however, to perhaps attend the annual conference of the National League of Cities, of which, you know, the city is a member. Obviously, that is, there's a legislative conference that is held each spring, that's in Washington, DC, which obviously would be minimal cost. There's a national conference that typically takes place in December, that is generally outside this area, that would obviously be more costly. So, in putting this memo together, I wasn't trying to dictate what the council should necessarily do, I would suggest that we eventually develop a policy that has some guidelines, and that the type of training or conferences that the council members would attend would be specifically related to your service as a council member, and designed to enhance your effectiveness in the positions that you hold on behalf of the city. Obviously, if you take 2,000 times seven, it adds up to $14,000 rather than 15. I did include an additional $1,000, recognizing that, I believe, there's an annual meeting or conference that I believe the mayor of the city attends.
The Mayor's Association, yeah.
I can't remember the exact name of that, I apologize, mayor. And from time to time, there have been members of this council that have served as a board member for MML, and I believe there may be an additional meeting or two per year related to services of board member. So, anyway, that, it's kind of sketchy, I realize, but I just wanted to try to put some thoughts on paper, and maybe get some direction from the council this evening, if it's in concept, you're comfortable with what I'm proposing, and we could certainly bring back something a little bit more formal. I believe the city clerk had recommended to me that perhaps it could be drafted as an administrative regulation or something of that nature, so the policy is somewhat more formal than the memo that's included in your packet this evening.
If I could just follow up, and maybe Bruce can tell me if I am remembering this correctly. My recollection of the discussion was that we were sort of dividing the conferences into two categories. One category was conferences to which council members went, which were generally for the good of the city, and we wanted the council to go. That would include MML, probably, it would include, oh, COGS stuff, all those don't cost money.
ICLI.
ICLI, and the National League of Cities. And that those would sort of end up being covered by the city, because there was a city benefit to having council members go to that. Then there'd be a second group of training conferences, which would be for the benefit of the council member, and, you know, within the scope of their work, but that wouldn't be one of the organizations to which the city as an entity belongs. I guess, what I'm thinking of is different than this, I guess, because if some council member, for example, went to a National League of Cities meeting in, what's an expensive place to go from here, San Francisco or something, they would end up using up all their money, and yet, the trip would probably benefit the entire city, because the city would be represented, and we would have the benefit of whatever kinds of things were being carried on in the conference. So, I don't want, in a sense, sort of penalize somebody for going to an expensive NLC meeting if they're going to an organization that the city belongs to. And so, what I thought we were going to come up with was sort of a list of entities that pretty much are the ones that you've got here, MML, NLC, COG, ICLI, that, you know, there would be money provided for council members to go to. And then, if there was additional training that council members thought they needed to do their jobs better, there would be some small amount allocated per council member for that. Is that sort of your recollection of it?
Yes.
Okay, now, did you want to add anything?
Well, it was just that I wanted to remind the city manager that there have been occasions in the past when I and other members have gone to the ICLI conferences, and those are--
What, I'm sorry?
International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives, that the city's a member of, and that Daryl has gone to as well. And that in most cases, that organization provides partial funding, but the city reimburses for the remaining funding. And my recollection of where I thought the discussion was going was the same as the mayor just stated.
I guess I went to one ICLI conference on transportation, too, because we were dealing with, I guess that was early on in the metro issue. Colleen?
I don't have particularly strong feelings about the way things are set up. What you're describing isn't what I remember, though, I thought that they were going to put out an amount for each council member. And, you know, I went to the American Planning Association Conference in Philadelphia. in Philadelphia this year, and it was paid for by HUD, which was great. But while I was there, I was wishing that there were more people from the city there, because, you know, they had things on all the new stuff that they're doing with the tree ordinances, and they have affordable housing, things. And there might be a lot of conferences that are helpful to city council members, that are organizations that we may or may not be a part of.
Which was the second component of what you was talking about.
Yeah, and I wasn't trying to discourage that. What I was trying to sort of avoid is making somebody say, "Well, this year, I have the time to go to the NLC and represent the city at NLC, but gee, if I do that, I'm not going to be able to go to MML, or to ICLI, or to whatever else I was doing, because this is going to take up all of my allocation." And I guess I don't, I think one year, for example, Mark went to NLC and represented the city on some issue, I can't remember what it was. But that shouldn't sort of, because those are organizations that the city, you know, benefits from, I'm not sure it should count against one council member's allocation. I guess, I think we're doing fine the way we are, except for the interest that some council members have in sort of training for their job, which would require a little bit of additional money. Maybe we could budget a little bit of additional money, maybe one, what's one conference, like $300 or something like that?
Depends on where it's at. The other thing I wanted to say is that I do support having some extra money for the mayor and the people who are the representatives of MML and COGS to go to those developmental conferences. My job is such that I don't have time to represent the city at those things. I don't have that much vacation leave, and I have children that I have to spend it on, but I do really appreciate the people that do go, and I know that there's a lot of energy and effort that is spent in those. And the more, the more time that I spend on the council, the more I really see the value of the interactions of the relationships that people have with those organizations. And so I wanted to support that as well.
The mayor's conference is usually held in February in Annapolis for a reason. No, because it's the middle of the legislative session. And both you can get legislators to come and talk to you, which we always do, but also because there's a lot of time allocated for mayors to go and talk to their legislators, and to legislative committees, and to other members in their county delegations, and--
My interest is in allowing council members to have a bit of flexibility to choose what those training programs are. And I am comfortable with it being a round number for each council member, or $15,000 for all council members together. I really would hate to get down in the weeds on this one and, you know, decide that there's $500 for this discretionary training, and then $2,000 for, you know, anything that the city's a member of. I think that the way that we operate, you know, needs to be done out in the open, and there shouldn't be anything that we wouldn't want published in the post that we'd be doing with city funds. So I did go to that, I'd forgotten about that Montgomery County land use regulation conference, but that was extremely useful, and city staff were there. So it was certainly something that we all benefited from. And I think that because we bring, as citizen legislators, we bring our various skills to the job there. Sometimes are ways that we need to fill in training on topics that we aren't expert in. So I hope that, you know, if that's the understanding that we can continue doing as we are doing. And I think this discussion has helped us do it out in public. And prior to this, it was, you know, that you went to MML or not, but really, there wasn't a lot of understanding about what else you could go to. I would like to cross one T, that this came up a couple of, I guess about two years ago, when the county executive had his ball and awards program. And this did come before the council, because I was interested in going to that in order to better recognize David Eisner, who was getting an award from the county executive. I think that those are still very valuable things for, to come part, to be represented at. You're recognized as part of the crowd. If there's political networking going on there, there's political networking going on at the MML Conference in Ocean City. So I would hope that, especially when a council member's award was being somehow recognized, that they would be entitled to attend those meetings.
And if I can just reiterate that, I think the proposal that the mayor made takes all of that into account. I think the only thing that we would need to do would be to point out to the city manager that she might need to increase the amount allocated for that item, if that were to be the case, because it would essentially say, "We're all able to go to meetings that the city is a member of, and there's an extra little piece on top of there to cover some additional training."
Yeah, I mean, I think the practical consideration from my standpoint is that at some point in putting together the budget, I have to have some figure to use, and if, it is highly unlikely, I realize that not all of you even go to Ocean City, but if I had even had this council choose to go to the National, Annual National League of Cities, and that's been a very popular event in some cities that I've worked in, those type of conferences, that they're in California, they're multi--
They wipe it out.
Could have a pretty significant cost, and could wipe out half of what is currently in the budget. And what I don't want to find myself in the position, since that conference is in December, is having three of you come and basically, you know, and we would, register you for the National League of Cities Annual Conference in December, and then the rest of you start trying to go to Ocean City in June, and your budget's exhausted. And that's kind of where I was leaning in terms of coming up either with some sort of allocation to help in the budgeting process, or alternatively, if there's something that would be extraordinary, then I would need to know that probably around January or February in terms of putting appropriate funding in the budget, or alternatively, come back to you mid-year if it looks like there's a funding question. But I've got to have some number that I can work with.
I don't believe that we've, at least not since I've been on the council, have had more than one person going to NLC at a time. We could sort of say that that's our expectation, is that not more than one person would go, and--
It's sort of a first-come, first-served?
Well, I mean, I think the council would have to make that decision. The times that I know about it before, it hasn't, it's been an issue of who had time to do it, and it's, I don't know the place, times that there's been competition, maybe we just have to work that out.
Thank you. I would just like to suggest that we put a number on the table and agree to it, so we move on with the more important pieces of the budget.
Well, the city manager's put $15,000 on the table. I would be happy with that.
I'm happy to stay with the 15, but I would point out that I think 18 might be more realistic. So if we put a couple thousand extra on the reconciliation, just to make note of it, then I'm happy to move on.
Okay, all right. And I'm assuming that the council basically is wanting to stay with the process that we use now?
Now that we have one, yes.
Recognizing that it accommodates Councilmember Austin Lane's wishes from previously, which were not accommodated.
I can do that?
All right, okay. So have we, what else do we need to do? We need to do information systems in this category, anything else?
We need to do the capital portion of it. I do think that would be worthwhile.
Okay.
If you could turn to the capital outlay section of your binder.
Yep.
Specifically, the items that are related to general government would be on the first page of the CIP, which would be under information technology. And with that, I would turn it over to Mr. Castillo.
Okay. I can briefly comment on some of the things that are in there. We're planning to upgrade our phone system at Public Works. We've identified that as maybe an alternate site for city administration in case something happens, emergency management kind of thing. There's also a new plotter in there for some of the police initiatives that they want to do. They want to get into mapping and some crime analysis. There's also $6,500 for Public Works, and that would be to retrofit or improve what they already have. They have a plotter that is currently on a table, and it's not very usable. We want to put legs on it, basically, and a way of dispense, excuse me, the way of dispensing the paper, and pay for some supplies that would go along with it. And some maintenance that it hasn't had in a while. There's also another server, and I'm not sure what the library user pool computers are, but I'm thinking that's part of their maintenance contract.
Yeah, it's the public access computers, and it's basically almost a lease payment, if you will.
Got you.
As long as it gets an R in useful.
Yeah, they are useful, though.
It's supposed to be user-full.
It should be user-full, yes, it should be.
As opposed to the non-useful computers in the library, which were not there.
See, I was being discreet on that one.
Not discreet enough?
I know there's also two more items in there. There's an Intranet server, which is on page two. And that said, initially, we want to provide to our staff a way of disseminating information internally. An Intranet would provide a website where staff could go and get policies, print out policies, or get their leave balances, or interface with our accounting software, things like that. It's something that our HR person put together. It does have another side of it, where it includes our gathering of resumes and things like that with its job openings. It would interface with our financial software. And then there's some money in there for programming software for recreation, and they probably can speak more about that.
My intent, Abe, was for Deborah to discuss that, because she's more familiar with the request.
Something that we've talked with them about. Questions?
Any questions from the council on the, yes, Terry?
Yeah, I don't see the, and I know this has been mentioned, the problem tracking system. Barb had mentioned there might be some new software that we're looking at. Is that, I don't know--
In place of action.
Are you?
In place of action.
In place of, yeah.
No, no, we're not requiring any capital equipment.
Okay.
So that's why it's not in here.
Okay.
I do appreciate you bringing that up, Councilmember Siemens. To date, I've not received any feedback from the council on the link we have sent out. Certainly, given the concerns that have been expressed about action, I wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to look at that. And at this point, if, for whatever reason, the council either doesn't have any comments, or, you know, isn't particularly interested in checking that out, and staff will just probably go ahead and move forward after we look at some other systems, but--
I think the silence on that was, "It looks good."
Okay. Because I wasn't sure if it, you all were busy and hadn't had a chance to look at it.
But then I've said that at least twice before about previous systems.
That is exactly what I was going to say. That's okay, but the other ones did, too.
So I--
The funding for that is in the operational budget, and it wouldn't be any more than what we're doing now, so it's not an increase.
I would like to see the city obtain the very best system it can at the very lowest cost, and not depend on our shared expertise up here, but instead depend on the city staff for--
We had actually looked at a demo. There were representatives from every department there. We were very pleased with the functionality. Just wanted to give the council a chance to look at it in case you had any comments, but I'm perfectly comfortable weighing in with the input, obviously, from staff in moving forward. Did you have something to comment?
Well, one of the interesting things about going to the American Planning Association Conference is that a lot of people that go there are planning officials and city officials. And so several of the merchants that were there had this integrated software that they were doing demos up there, that even included like permitting and other kinds of planning support, but it was all integrated. Complaint system was there, all the finance systems were integrated together for all of the different departments. And there were only two different companies that were there, but, you know, they, it was basically a single software set. It did their recreation programming and everything, all online in a single software component. And I keep hearing us talk about, you know, different software for different things, and I was looking in fiscal year '09, it shows $9,000 for security and, like, it looks like a key card system for people who belong to the Tacoma, New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center. And I wondered if we had looked at any of these integrated systems. I know the finance director is here, and that's probably one of the most important core components of any system. We don't do our own planning. But, you know, the demos that they had there looked pretty interesting. And so I'm wondering if we had looked at a whole integrated system, and if that would make life easier for us or more difficult.
As far as the security system goes, that's a physical security system, and it would be integrated with our current system. The recreation system, we've been trying to use the one that's integrated with our system, and it is not doing the job. And that's why recreation would tell you why they go out.
It doesn't have the facilities management part that--
And I think it also doesn't track some of the program registration data that I know some of the council members have expressed interest in in terms of tracking a little bit more components by program. The current software, which is integrated as part of the overall penetration system, the functionality is just not going to be there on the recreation side.
My understanding is, though, that the proposal, the system they're buying, will be integrated with our financial system.
It will update--
It will update our financial system, so it will be integrated.
Is it made by the same outfit that made our financial system?
No.
I think they are still exploring options. I don't think they've settled on a vendor, because obviously it would have to be a bid process. I think they have gone through and just examined different ones to make sure it would have the functionality, but I think that review process is still underway.
We have to fit the thing out, but--
But I think, I think at the higher level, the council member Clay's suggestion is important, because we're looking at several purchases, and if there are integrated packages out there that, you know, address the breadth of the things that we need to do with software in the city, maybe we should at least look at those and see whether they make sense or not, whether they would enhance the service.
Yeah, I think that's true. I think it really depends on the services provided by a particular city in which you're trying to integrate. In one community I worked in, that's more, was more of a full-service community than Tacoma Park, which had utilities. We were a 911 center. We had replaced all the software as a project I was in charge of as an assistant. Obviously, that was much broader than what we're talking about, but that had a price tag of $1 million, so you really--
It's not the one we were thinking.
No, no, and it wouldn't be applicable to here. You know, I think that's one of the decisions that you have to look at, is what are the packages, you know, including, can you buy only the modules you need? And--
It just seems like right now, when we're looking at buying several different packages, that it might be worthwhile to take a little bit of time to look at the integrated package to see if that is a viable alternative.
I agree.
Okay, is there anything, is there anything else in terms of the hardware, the information technology hardware? Okay. I think that's it in terms of general government, or--
Yeah, the only thing I would just mention, and it's because it's listed by accounting classification in order to kind of tie into the audit, is under the special revenue funds, there is something that's listed as general government. That is actually the expenditure of the cable grant monies. That will actually be to something that will be discussed under the communications section of the budget. Work sessions, not general government. Just wanted to clarify why we're skipping over that.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. We're going to take a very short break and come back, and hopefully it will be very short. short.
There you go.
I'm making progress. But my body's still dolmed about three and four.
Good, it's time for you to be asleep. What are you doing all night?
Here, it would be nice.
Here, we have this Davis. Oh, yeah. I didn't eat one side of my night either. I haven't eaten right yet.
Grasshoppers, yeah.
Have you been talking all week about that?
Okay, right. All right, it's good.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Pig's feet. Pig, pig, pig.
All right. We are going to resume with the discussion of Public Works and going right straight into Stormwater.
Yeah, I'll just make some introductory comments, and I'd like to turn it over to Darryl. What I'd like to maybe do is deal with the Public Works operating budget capital and then Sorry Ali, followed by the Stormwater last. The overall operating budget for the Public Works Department is up by about a quarter of a million dollars. About 58% of that is related to personnel costs. One of the things that the council may wish to talk to the Public Works Director about is, as I mentioned in my transmittal letter and in the overview of this department's budget, we are proposing that the three part-time custodial positions be restructured, where we would have one full-time position and one 15-hour part-time position. Within the actual salary dollars, there's really no increase from one fiscal year to another, but there would be an additional cost to the city for the fringe benefits for the new full-time position. Beyond the personnel cost, a few things that are also driving some of the increase in the Public Works Department budget is higher cost for gas and diesel. At last, the last council meeting on Monday night, Councilmember Siemens had asked for some additional information, and included in the information that I distributed this evening is a fuel usage report for FY07. And I'm sure if there's questions about that, Ms. Brakeway would be happy to answer those. We also anticipate some additional higher cost in operating supplies for the purchase of a cool and recovery machine, leaf boxes, and other right-of-way supplies. And also, as mentioned in my transmittal letter and on Monday night, Ms. Brakeway has recommended, and I concur, that we should include some additional funding in the operating budget to have a greater emphasis on hazard and health turning of trees with the goal of obviously preserving more of the city's urban forest. So that's sort of a thumbnail sketch, I guess, of the operating budget as I proposed for FY08. Ms. Brakeway, do you have any comments you'd like to add?
Sure, sure. Just generally speaking, a lot of the division budgets have stayed fairly stable from last year to this year. Building Maintenance Division has seen some significant changes. One of the things that you probably can't really tell from the numbers in front of you is when we brought on a facility supervisor, a position that hadn't been existing in the city for several years, with that came the ability to bring a lot of our contract services in-house versus the outside consultants and contractors we were using for HVAC, plumbing, and electrical work. A significant portion of that's been able to have been done in-house. So while our supply line has increased slightly to cover those materials that we need for those repairs, the subcontractor line is dropping. And that was part of the goal of that change, and we're seeing that already in this current year's budget, and we project that to be even more significant in next year's. You're probably also aware that we've shifted the cleaning schedule in March. Primarily, most of our janitorial staff work in the evenings now from 4:00 to midnight. We also have some weekend coverage, which we didn't have before. We think that the shift from the three-part-time to one full-time, a slightly less part-time position, will enable us to continue and enhance that program and work schedules around to better suit the needs of the building. It's still a bit of a moving target as we expand programs and open up sections of the building and enhance some of the recreational programs. We're having to do sort of a give and take in terms of when staff can be here to clean and how best to clean the rooms, how best to clean the floors. So I don't think we've really landed on where we're eventually going to end up, but we're definitely moving in the right direction. And this staffing change, I think, will help that. It's very difficult to keep part-time people on board. Most folks that we do hire on a part-time basis are looking for full-time work, and so as soon as they find it, they leave. So we sort of have a revolving staff issue with the part-time positions. Let's see, most of the other budgets are remaining fairly stable. No changes are proposed in some of the major programs that we do. The leaf collection program's going to be remaining at seven weeks versus a six-week program. We did seven weeks this year, and that worked very effectively, so we'd like to keep that program intact. Sanitation, no additional changes. We have added the compact fluorescent light recycling. That's not a curbside pickup program, a drop-off program at the Public Works facility, but that's sort of the only programmatic change that that division has seen. We have had some significant vehicle problems in this past fiscal year with our main recycling trucks, so people will see a lot of different types of vehicles out for the sanitation division. Really have to give a lot of compliments to the staff for the flexibility that they've shown in terms of working with whatever equipment we have available to get the job done. We think we've solved the problem with the large recycling truck. It had some extreme operating failures, which, knock wood, seems to be finally repaired after three attempts, and I think we're back in business. If we continue to have problems, we may be asking the manager and the council to take a look at replacement of vehicle sooner than we had originally planned. The urban forest program is one that sees two changes from past practices till now. One Barb had mentioned was the maintenance pruning. It's basically best management practice and, you know, standards for arboriculture are such that you should be doing more, at least according to the current arborist, more maintenance pruning to actually enhance the life and reduce the hazards of the trees. There are several trees and certain ways that they grow, where if you remove branching stems, take off certain branches, you actually enhance the health of the tree and help extend its life. We've not done significant hazard pruning in the city. I think the only thing that's been done that I'm aware of is PEPCO, when they kind of come through and do their line clearing, that's a different kind of hazard. We're not talking about clearing for lines. We're basically talking about maintenance pruning for health of trees. So there's some funding put into that. I believe $30,000 to begin addressing that. Also, in this year's budget, is the first year what I think will be a repetitive funding request for a forest management plan in Sligo Mill and Poplar Mill. That's a commitment that the city made when that area was purchased, and as we all know, it's in a fairly blighted condition. Both man-made as well as natural. We have a lot of problems with invasives in that area. So what the arborist is envisioning, and it'll be largely his direction of program to begin there, is an invasive's removal program. So I think there's funding at the rate of about $15,000 annually to begin first an invasive's removal program and then kind of an assessment and figure out what kind of remediation we need to do. There's kind of a balancing act between whether or not we need to do debris removal from some of the dumping that's gone on there historically. Some of it probably just needs to be left alone. Others of it we may be able to remove and provide access. I think there's also some stream stabilization that needs to take place. So I think those would be kind of the phases that you'd see. The first would be an invasive's removal program. The next would be any kind of hazard or waste removal. And then the third would be stream stabilization and any kind of other enhancement that we can do for that area. Let's see, what else? I think that's, operating budget-wise, pretty much the only difference is otherwise it's, you know, all the programs are intact. City engineer's budget remains fairly unchanged. Were there any questions relative to?
Just a quick clarification on the recycling truck. It's been the issue, is it the one with the two sides that go up and over?
Mm-hmm.
Because I know I haven't seen that.
Back when we purchased it, that was where everybody was going, to the Labrie model, double-sided. Now you don't see them on the road anymore, and now we know why. Unfortunately, what's happening with the large trucks is they're getting highly technical, very computerized, real sensitive hydraulic systems. And when you mix trash and sensitive hydraulic, it's not a good combination. So it also requires outside maintenance. I mean, there's certain systems that, you know, we just can't get into, and it's designed kind of as components rather than individual parts. So, you know, we've had some problems with new trucks where if, you know, a door is just not closed right or a latch somewhere just doesn't hit right, the truck won't start. I mean, they're just getting everything so significantly sensitive that for, you know, rough and heavy-duty vehicles, it's not working to our advantage, anyway.
And I just wanted to say thank you for the initiative on Sligo Mill and Poplar Mill. A lot of the neighbors have been waiting for that to happen for years, and I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, we're excited about the prospect. And another component that's related in my mind to that, you may or may not be aware, we're starting to do invasive's removal and noxious species removals on public property around the city. We've undertaken several bamboo removal jobs. We're about to start a major ivy removal on a slope. In addition to that, the arborist has been notifying residents of their need to trim back bamboo and take care of ivy, take care of trees. So it's part of a campaign that we think will promote and get more and more visible about, but certainly realized that we needed to sort of make sure our house was in order at the same time we were, you know, encouraging residents to do so as well. I don't know if you saw Joy, the solid waste information. We included that as well.
I really appreciate that and was just trying to make sense of it. Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Why don't you go ahead? The, what you pointed out with the base system charge, I see that same amount on both Montgomery Counties and ours. Is that something included in the tax bill or?
It's on the tax bill, but it is a fee.
Okay.
And it is consistent for both incorporated and unincorporated. It's kind of the standard charge that everybody pays, and then beyond that, it's giddy-dat depending on what type of service and who provides the service.
Okay. And then the leaf charge is in a different-
I removed the leaf charge because for our system, the leaf collection is handled by a different division than a sanitation division, so it kind of makes it difficult to compare and provide a cost for it. The staff that do leaf collection, leaf collection is happening seven- The staff that do leaf collection, leaf collection is happening seven weeks of the year. The rest of the time, they're the right-of-way division. So it makes it difficult to compare and contrast the leaf collection. I could do one separately if you'd be interested in seeing that, but it would be making several assumptions in terms of percentage of staff time and things like that.
So the staff are, I know there's some temporary workers that you get at that time of year, but then some of the people who are doing leaf collection are full-time staff?
Yes, we use six of our own, full-time staff and twelve temporary labors.
So then I would think it would be the twelve temporary labors, that amount?
Uh huh.
And what else would it be?
Lot of equipment, you know, the rakes, the leaf hoses, the belts, and various things. We have a leaf collection line item in our budget, which is everything from mailings to?
But you, we own that?
We own that, yeah. Because it gets such heavy use, we have to do a lot of maintenance and repair of the leaf backs each year, so we spend several thousand dollars just, you know, keeping the leaf machines up and in running order.
I'd be comfortable with the assumptions you made, as long as you made it clear and...
Now, this information is for fiscal year '07. It's right off the county's website. I don't know what they've got planned for '08. That wasn't available to me at this point, though it may be available somewhere. And I also just want to make sure people are aware that the county's program is a service charge program where people are actually paying that amount. The information that I have for Tacoma Parks, people don't actually pay that amount.
Right.
It's funded through our general tax bill, so every taxpayer is contributing a portion of what they pay in taxes is paying for the solid waste collecting fee. So it's a little bit of a disconnect there, but if we were to charge per household, that's what the cost would be.
I really appreciate you doing this because it updates, I believe, what we saw in the TASD report and...
Yeah, the cost has actually gone down for both the county and the city, interestingly enough. A large degree of the cost reduction for the city is shifting over of long-term staff to newer staff at a different rate of pay, you know. People are retiring and then new people coming on board.
I want to thank you for everything that you do. And I know all the people in Ward 2, almost all, and thank you for everything that you do for the ward. We've gotten a lot of service. The new tree person has just been doing a great job, building relationships with people in the community. I know the city engineer has gone out and helped some people with some issues that they've got, kind of more neighbor-to-neighbor issues, looking at things, talking to people, and that kind of personal service is just really appreciated. So a few things I have some questions about. One of them is a relatively high miscellaneous section on solid waste management. So we've got a total budget for solid waste management of seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, and two hundred and twenty-five thousand of that is miscellaneous charges. What kinds of things are miscellaneous charges in solid waste management?
My guess would be the refuse disposal fee, which is about two hundred and nineteen or two hundred and twenty thousand of that amount.
Oh, and that doesn't go in services and charges? Oh, okay. Great.
Yeah, I think our budget this year is two hundred and seventeen thousand just for refuse disposal alone, so...
Well, that pretty much covers it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Palmer Court is still on the 2011 paving cycle. I appreciate that it's on the cycle. I know that you had some, big little extra money this year, cost a little less money to do some of the things, and I'm hoping maybe if you have a little extra money at the end of the year, next year, that you can think about Palmer Court. And I think that to do that, it's going to take talking to the neighbors about kind of what the issues are with it. So that if you thought that that was an appropriate thing to do, you'd actually be able to do it at the end of the year, because it's probably difficult to do both the planning and the paving at the same time.
Yeah, I think the engineer has been out to Palmer Lane and taken a look at some, I know some is stormwater concern issues.
Yeah, that's basically it.
Our interpretation, correct me if I'm wrong, is there's less contribution from the city road?
Yes, this is mostly on land, private property runoff. Major complaints seem to be about the retaining walls which faces Carroll Avenue.
Right.
And those are not, there's really nothing that we can do.
Yeah, I'm not asking you to explain it, I'm just putting in a pitch for if you have extra money at the end of the year.
And if I can just jump in and tag Team Niagara Court there.
Niagara Court.
Yeah, now that's one that we haven't added to the system.
I still get a lot of folks who ask me about recycling in something other than the yellow bins. They're all jealous that the county people have those blue carts. Although I have to tell you, in a couple places where I've lived where they've had the carts, where they have the hydraulic thing that comes out and picks them up, wherever the trash truck stops, it ruins the road right there. So I'm not particularly advocating for that. It's just I think people are still talking about more or better mechanisms for recycling. I want to throw that out there.
Well, part of what drives that for us is our collection equipment. So the next time we purchase a recycling vehicle, we can take a look at what's out there and, you know, potentially we could, we'll certainly evaluate and present to the council the various options. Getting into a cart program is very expensive, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
If I could just jump in there and say, you may not have been around for some of those discussions, but Daryl has brought us proposals at least twice, maybe three times that I can remember, and I'll claim to have taken the lead in going back now.
It's expensive.
Expensive, and they tend not to work in hilly areas, and we've been concerned about all the stuff ending up the street and heading down to the bottom.
Well, and let me just say, as somebody who holds the other point of view, that you can save a significant amount of money doing them, and even if we did a partial program, we probably could save some money.
Okay.
And the point of view was, no, no, no.
Okay.
And there you have it. No consensus here.
Neighbors are still interested in the street tree plan? I don't know if that's something that the city arborist could do, or maybe we've tried...
Purchasing of trees or?
No, just knowing what to plant. I mean, there's...
Oh, what to plant?
Yeah, people are talking in the community, should we plant cherry trees? We've got a bunch of really old trees on Boyd, and I know people have been talking about that. They want some uniformity in the community, and so I gave you guys that sample of the one from...
Too late for that.
To come apart, uniformity?
Of the street trees.
You'll find that the current arborist is very much in support of that line of thinking, you know, consistent trees in a street and a sort of a sense of a street tree for certain areas.
Right.
And, you know, they'll be supporters and detractors from that line of thought, but...
Well, people can still do what they want, but they can know that there is a plan if they want to participate in it.
I think that one of the things that Todd has been talking to Virginia Kelly, the newsletter editor, about is perhaps even having a regular feature in the newsletter, which would be kind of a frequently asked questions or best advice sort of thing. So I think they're moving in that direction. Todd is really well-versed at providing public education, as well as he's just kind of...
He's great.
Wired and motivated in that way, so I think we'll be seeing more and more kind of public information pieces, how-tos showing up on the website as well as in the newsletter. He's got a vast background with that information.
He's great. Two more things. One is maybe this year to start thinking about how we can help provide support to private property owners about dealing with stormwater on private property. That's an issue. I know the city doesn't want to go in and do the things, but a lot of people in the community are talking about the stormwater issues that they have. They have issues with their neighbor dumping water into them. They don't, you know, they don't want to sue their neighbor, they don't want to fight with their neighbor, and maybe we could start thinking about how we could support some collaborative efforts with those neighbors. So I just want to throw that idea out there. And the other thing is right-of-ways. I know that we have right-of-ways here. There's been a couple of right-of-way issues. I went to a party the other day, and someone talked to me about the right-of-way behind their household. Now, does the city deal with those, like, kind of paper street alleyway? Is that you?
That's us, and very minimal for many of the paper streets.
Okay. Because, you know, there's still the one that Linden Court that goes to the Tacoma Park, I forget the name of that park that's there that's back behind the houses, behind Heather and Elm.
Behind Elm Avenue.
Yeah. And that's got a fence across part of the right-of-way, and then one of the neighbors has put white rock down in it, which really kind of claims it as personal space and makes it, I think, less inviting for people to go into that park. And then the other issue is behind Boyd and back into Manor Circle, there's an alleyway back there that I guess that on occasion has been blocked by people.
Yeah. Now, we do do a fair bit of maintenance on the Boyd Alley. There is, there are two sides of Boyd Alley, a north side and a south side. One side dead ends at a fairly steep drop-off. We don't do anything beyond that. The other side goes all the way through. We do do a fair bit of routine maintenance there, cutting back and whatnot, keeping that access clear. Though I know issues have come up in the past about parking or people planting vegetable gardens or, you know, stuff like that, so we sort of take it on a case-by-case basis if someone's encroaching in the right-of-way.
And that's all Ward 3?
The resident is in Ward 3, that's right. But it acts also in the Manor Circle area, some of which is Ward 2, and I'm not really sure where all the lines are. But they complained to me, so pass them over.
Carrie.
It's been a while, so I would like to remind you that Councilmember Clay made several nice comments, and I will just second them.
Oh, thank you.
The, I was curious about the truck. It seems like it wasn't so long ago we purchased that truck. How long have we had that?
Seven years.
Seven years. Time flies, doesn't it? So it's no longer under any warranty from the company at this point?
Right, right. Though we have had some, at the third time, we got some significant help from the manufacturer who sent a rep down and worked with the repair shop to bring it back up.
Okay, good. Again, I second Councilmember Williams' comments on Sligo Mill's work, and I appreciate your ability to get to that in the coming year. I would just encourage you to use some of that money to try to organize some volunteers to help with that, because as you know, the invasive problem is very labor-intensive, and if we can do anything to get some neighborhood volunteers to help out in that, it'd be great.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
The invasive removal, glad to hear that, not just about Sligo Mills, but as we've discussed there along the school property, has a real problem we have in our neighborhood, and that extends on down into park and planning property with the valley that's coming up over the edge with Kudzu and English Ivy. So any help that you can give in trying to get them to address that problem would be really appreciated. And then lastly, I'll just mention, and this really doesn't so much deal with your decisions, but the council policy, and it wasn't too long ago when the Recreation Department was in here and I'd made a comment, something to the effect that I was surprised to hear that Tacoma Park was the Walmart of municipalities when it comes to part-time employees, that we heavily use part-time employees so that we can avoid the benefits. I suspect that the Public Works Department is probably second, close behind the Recreation Department in the use of part-time employees, and I wonder if you could give us a feel for how many employees and how, you know, what, really what we're looking for, what I'm looking for, is what would it cost us to be more fair to the employees and hire people for, you know, fill these positions with full-time employees so that they benefit from the insurances and we benefit from more dedicated employees?
Wayne could probably answer the question about the added cost. We only had this year three part-time positions, and they're all in building maintenance. If the proposal that we've put forward to turn two of those positions into a full-time position, we'd only have one part-time position. So we don't...
You do make good, a lot of use of the temporary labor.
Yeah, temporary labor is used extensively in leaf collection. It's also used fairly heavily by our Gardens Division, which is a two-staff organization, and in order to do what they need to do in the spring, summer, and fall, we bring in one to two temporary labors that assist the Gardens Division. So those two areas are where we largely use temps. The other place we use temporary labor is kind of in an unplanned or unscheduled basis. If we have an employee out on injury leave or, you know, change of job, resignations, and we need to fill in, we use temporary labor for that. It's actually been a helpful tool for us in terms of hires. A lot of our entry-level maintenance positions, we tend to hire through the temps, and that's been a very, very good way for us to, you know, evaluate work and get to know what an employee or what a person is capable of, whether or not they'll fit with the division. So we do tend to hire a lot from our temps.
How much do we make consistent use of same individuals from day to day, week to week?
Well, one of the things I did when I first got appointed to the position of the Public Works Director was establish a policy for temporary labor use, because we had had some issues with long-term temporary labors where people were, you know, working for the city for extended periods of time as temporary labor. We now have a policy where after three months, they need either change assignments or change persons, so we tend to try to keep it to that three-month basis.
Again, I'm not sure that solves the issue for the individuals, and I...
Well, curiously enough, a lot of the temporary labors that we have, for instance, in leaf collection, we get the same guys back year after year. They're not necessarily looking for full-time positions.
All right, that's all for now, thank you.
If I could just follow up. It sounds as if the places we're using temporary labor are where the demand for labor is seasonal, like leaf collection occurs for seven weeks now in the fall, and the gardens and the, some of the other things would be just in the summer, is that correct?
Yes, spring, summer, and then fall again with gardens, with leaf removal in the gardens. We are, we have an emphasis now in the department of being very sort of project-focused for our temporary labors.
Okay. Go ahead.
I want to make sure to point to the good work that you've been doing on sidewalks and stormwater. I really do appreciate the neighborhood projects you all have taken on and seen through. They've been going really well lately, and I know it's not, it's not easy, but I do appreciate all the work you've put into that. And then the second thing is I would echo the other councilmembers saying that we would like to make sure that, you know, for people who are working for us full-time or could be working for us full-time because of, you know, we want our labor practices to be structured in a way that provides benefits when really it's appropriate, when they deserve it. I'm glad that you're converting to one full-time position, what was previously part-time, so...
Yeah, one of the things I'm hoping to do is, I have been, we have been looking around to different temporary agencies to find out what they have available, and there are several now that do offer health packages to their temporary labors, three dollars a month or three dollars a week. So they're starting to provide some additional support for their employees, and we could make that a stipulation of contracts with us in the future. It's a cost that the employee or the person themselves bear, but it's a fairly minimal cost relative to the potential safety net it provides for them.
I would certainly support that.
Sounds like a good idea.
I'm looking at the tables on the street restoration program. We had one in the information we got prior to this evening, and then another one we got this evening.
Yes.
My first question was going to be to ask you what the difference was, and now I see that the difference is that Elm Avenue has moved off the list, I assume because they're milling it right at this moment, at least when it was like they were.
Yeah, we had originally planned to do all of Elm in fiscal year '07. Then we got a little more cautious when we thought fund-wise we were running a little low, so we sort of pulled it off the list, put it on '08, and then Ali was able to take a look again at the programs we were doing, find some cost savings in other areas, and determined that we could move ahead with that in '07. So he was able to get our contractor on a fairly short notice to come back out and finish that project. We've also been doing the dance with WSSC on that street, so they appear to be finished, right?
They appear to be, yeah. They could be back.
We're hopeful. We're hopeful.
Well, it would be a shame if they were back and tearing more holes in it, but...
Yeah.
We're just hoping that they won't. They did the last stretch of the curbs that they had in backfield in front of, or two hundred feet of it. feet of it, and they did it right before we moved.
Okay.
Yeah, so the adjustment you had between the original one and this one that you had was just a realization that we took Elm and Linden off, as we're doing it now, and that just bumped everything up a little bit. We still extend into fiscal year '11, but it's fewer streets in '11, and it bumped up a bit.
Okay.
Can I get another clarification on that? On the, on both versions, the, on the, unscheduled on-the-street list, the PCI has, generally has two figures for those streets?
Different sections of the block were rated at different levels. I know for Lincoln, I think the lowest rating is between Maple and Carroll, and then the higher ratings. The next block, Carroll to, I'm not sure if it's Jackson, or the next is the next rating, and then the tail end was the highest rating. So there's various, various ratings on that particular street.
Good, thank you, because that makes a whole lot more sense than trying to see how it might be currently and after the work that they might do.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, one of the things I think that was also asked at Monday night was the WSSC issue. I think Bruce, you had raised that, the $130,000 that we're showing as a revenue source from WSSC and what that relates to. It is based on, a best guess on our part, based on what WSSC has told us they plan to accomplish and what we see as fiscal year '08, and also our estimate of what the cost share amount might be. We do not have that amount in writing. We will sign an MOU with WSSC when we get down to the details. We're closest to getting an agreement with them on Heather Avenue, because they have finished that work, they're ready to provide us a cost estimate on that. But it's our best guess, the $130,000 relates to the tail end of the list you see on the bottom there, which goes from Jackson Avenue, Grant, Lincoln, and Erie, and that also includes Heather Avenue. That's the $130,000 that we'll be getting. We do have Heather Avenue on the street resurfacing schedule for fiscal year '08. It's in fairly bad shape in terms of its PCI, 19 and 25, so it's a fairly low-rated street. The other streets are rated relatively high, with the exception of that one block of, oh, I guess it's on Jackson Avenue, and then also a section of Lincoln Avenue that's rated in the fair range, the 44 and 49. So they're not currently on a timeframe for us in terms of restoration. One of the things that we're planning to do this summer is evaluate all the streets that were fair, excellent, that we haven't addressed in the last three to four years to determine whether or not we need to shift or move or adjust the list that was provided to us through the street study in 2003.
And if I can take this opportunity to thank you for your help in intervening with WSSC to address the stream bed that we had in the lower portion of the block of Lincoln.
They're a challenging bunch.
They did manage to come out and determine that, yes, in fact, it did have chlorine, and it was their leak, and they responded for WSSC in a very timely manner. And they came out and in less than one day found and fixed the problem. The only difficulty was the Certex supervisors who didn't want to give any information about what they were doing.
Well, we're not very happy with this.
Well-
Yeah, I was going to say, the status of the temporary patches out there.
Well, but that's the nature of temporary patches, and it provides a little entertainment for those of us on the street.
I haven't made as much progress on the missing fire hydrant, which appears to be the source of that metal pipe at Lincoln and Carroll Avenue. I think it has fallen entirely off WSSC's radar, way, way, way off. So we'll just continue to pursue it with them until we get a resolution.
Since, since we're talking about WSSC, I would just like to bring up the subject we talked about it on the Ward Four council walk, and that is the checking of fire hydrants, which I understand is a WSSC responsibility. There's concern in Ward Four neighborhood because years ago, someone died from a fire hydrant that didn't work, and we never see anyone checking fire hydrants. I wonder if we could see if that can happen, or what we can do to make that happen, or Fire Department says that it's not their responsibility, it's WSSC's?
They're saying that they don't check them?
Yes.
Because I'm aware that they do check some, you know, regardless of whose responsibility it is.
Okay.
Yeah, we can explore that. I'm sure it's a hot topic at WSSC now as a result of the fires in DC.
I appreciate it if you could check into that.
I wonder if you could just very briefly talk a little bit about this issue about the bridges?
Yes.
We did get some additional information, and it looks like the repairs could be fairly substantial on the bridges, and that there's a mention of phasing it, but that might increase the cost of it. But what's the timing on getting some of that additional information? Is this something that's going to happen before the council finishes looking at the budget, or is it going to be longer than that?
I can follow that up and do it in a short there. I just send a couple of messages for the vendor that we would like to see what is the possibility of phasing it. Obviously, there is some fixed cost that would stay fixed, like traffic control, like diversion of the stream for foundation repair. If he wants to do those, if he has to do it in phases, he would probably do it, charge us the same, the same amount again. Or there will be duplicate cost in phasing it out. But he has not responded to us whether it is even possible to phase out and make it critical, non-critical levels, you know. Do you want more detail? I have to talk to the-
Okay. My understanding is that there's no funding for the bridge repairs in the budget currently, is that correct?
There is no funding in the budget, and Daryl may want to comment on this, but for whatever reason, there has not been funding set aside in prior years for eventual repairs or replacement of these bridges in the ERR.
And this is not part of our street works, not considered part of our street work?
No.
Because that's just streets that aren't suspended over streams?
We do include that section on Maple Avenue, the resurfacing and the street work, and it's a street that's reflected on our schedule within the next year or two, but the actual structure of the bridge and the sidewalk adjacent to the bridge and, you know, guardrails and all the rest of it is not included, just the resurfacing itself.
Mm-hmm. The Flower Avenue Bridge, you know, I drive over and walk over, and it doesn't look, at least from the top of it, like it's in that bad shape. It doesn't creak like the Maple Avenue Bridge does when you walk on it, which is a little unnerving.
It is relatively in a better shape than the one in Maple Avenue. But if you look at the supporting beams, they're all corroded. You could see the reinforcement exposed.
Oh, well, that's not good to know. Okay, this is, this is a fair amount of money. If we need to add it to the budget, it's going to be a big problem. I mean, we're talking about, just say we look at the Maple Avenue Bridge, that's a, your estimate is like $185,000.
Good, that is the estimate we got.
Colleen and then Bruce.
I say we give the county back the $16 per bridge that they give us every year. That'd be $32 per year. We could give them 10 years' worth of money, and then they could come and replace the bridges.
One of the things we do get from the county is the evaluation. As part of the state requirement, the bridges get evaluated, and the county provides that evaluation to us. We get that evaluation each year. This year's report was sort of at a different level of concern, still not one that deemed anything a hazard or a significant concern, but they were raising the level of need for addressing some of the corrections. One of the things that we found most difficult, and Ali and his intern have spent countless hours on this, is that it's been very, very hard to find a contractor who will come anywhere near this project. A bridge over the stream and work over a stream just raises enormous environmental issues that make it sort of a nightmare for most vendors. The vendors that we got from, listed for Montgomery County is ones that they use. We're not at all interested. The only vendor I think you've got a response from is one that Park and Planning uses.
And that's a good lead-in to the point I was going to make, which is that even though Maple Avenue is ours, it's a, that bridge is a connector to two discontinuous pieces of Sligo Creek Parkway. I wonder what Park and Planning would say if we proposed to close that bridge. They now have a non-functioning parkway, and whether we might point out to them that it's in their best interest to help us with that bridge.
I wondered what the historic significance-
We have made contacts with the staff level, technical staff, and Park and Planning. As a matter of fact, they're the one to facilitate it, their vendor to provide us with the estimate.
Now, if they can just facilitate the line item in their budget to help, that would be great.
There is an extent. They did not consider those bridges to be their concern in terms of repairs. They are our bridges.
Yes, well, then therefore, if we decided to close them, they would have no say, and they would have no parkway.
That is correct, logically.
Why don't we just turn maintenance of that over to the county and drop the rebate for that portion? And that's a question for the council.
Daryl, you were saying that they did the evaluation. Can you give us a value on that?
In terms of the value of the bridges, or, oh, the value of an evaluation, the analysis that they do, do you have any sense what cost that would?
I'm not sure I quite understand. It's been an estimate of what cost is the-
What people are saying, let's, you know, give them back their money and then make them do that. I just want to make sure I understand what they're contributing and then what our costs are. I think I'm getting a good sense of what our costs are. I'm not sure I understand what they're contributing.
What they provide for us on a semi-annual basis, or bi-annual basis, is a, is a report that the fire consultant goes, evaluates all the bridges in the county, including our bridges.
Oh, so ours are just a-
Two in a series.
Two in a row.
Yeah, drop in the bucket compared to the-
And the report is fairly extensive, includes photographs, includes specific recommendations, and even includes cost estimates, though we found their cost estimates to be-
Exactly.
Very inaccurate.
Is it unreasonable to think that we could turn those over to the county?
I'm not sure what the legalities are involved in that. That's certainly something we can explore. I wrote a note to myself to follow up on that.
Thank you.
I think with the Maple Avenue Bridge, I mean, Maple Avenue is clearly ours, but I mean, Bruce has a point that it is a connector for Sligo Creek Parkway, and if that connector didn't exist, presumably they'd have to reroute Sligo Creek Parkway up, up old Carroll, around Carroll, down Flower, around, I mean, it would be fairly major detour, because this is, this is a very large cost. And then Flower Avenue one.
We don't have the same argument.
Right, we don't have the same argument.
So we'll go 50/50 on both.
Okay. But I'm, I just wanted to clarify that, because I didn't think that money was in the budget, and it said it is a very large cost.
Is it?
Yes, it's, we've been remiss for not showing it as a infrastructure cost in our equipment replacement reserve over time. I think it's just one of those things that was constructed so long ago.
And it sounds like, from what you say, that the costs in here don't necessarily reflect the true cost.
These costs are accurate, these are actual quotes that we got.
These are actual quotes, the cost that we got from the county report was a lot lower than this.
Okay, okay.
So we went after several contractors, including those that work for the, for the county, and we weren't able to get anybody who was willing to bid on it.
But you haven't-
And we asked for bids.
But there's no deadline in here?
No, there's no deadline.
Right, in other words, it doesn't indicate that this has to be done before 10 years, or?
I think in the, in the evaluation, they do have a timeframe, don't they?
Yeah, they are talking about one year, two year. That's the timeframe.
And these two bridges have risen to the level where they need to be done in one or two years?
Some aspects of it, not every default in the bridge, but certain defaults in the bridge are at that level, others are five to 10 year.
I think the only categorization they have done is one year set and a two-year set, two different types of defects.
Okay.
The itemized is one year, and the other is two years. They've done that over several years, and it has not been done, and I have to say that, that in the past reports, they have some of these issues that are reoccurring issues.
Okay, are we, are we ready to move on to stormwater?
I wanted to make some comments on special revenue and capital budget, if you want to do that before stormwater.
Sure, yes, let's go ahead and do that.
The significant special revenue items that we have, there are two that we're going to have direct management oversight on. One is Jackson Boyd Playground Construction. The funds for the design were in '07, the funds for construction will be in '08. The goal, of course, is to provide an accessible, attractive, inviting area for children and adults. We'll be involving the community in a very open process to help design and come up with the idea and the goals and the vision for that park. We've also had JKA Park Ball Field renovation and sprinkler system installation. It's one of those items that's been on our capital budget for a long time, and it's now, you know, each year gotten closer and closer, and next year is the year. The intention there is to renovate the ball field, improve the soils, provide actual turf, install a sprinkler system so that turf can be maintained. The last time we did this was at Spring Park with some mixed results. So it's an item that we have identified for several years now as coming up, and we'll need to involve the community in the understanding about what, what all that will entail. During construction, the field will be basically unusable while that's going on. That won't take an enormous amount of time, but there will probably be some issues of phasing and use of the field once you install a system like that, that will make it a little more sensitive to what it is now, which is anybody goes, plays in any conditions. If you have a restored field with the sprinkler system, you may not want use of it in very wet weather, you know, the city may want to get a little bit more involved in the use of the field. So that's what's envisioned for that project, and I guess, you know, we just need to get a sense of if there's community support for that, if we want to pursue that, that line. I know we get complaints from folks about ruts in the field, unevenness of the field, the difficulty of playing and the desire for smoother surface. But of course, we have to balance that with all the users of that area, and some people see its benefits in different ways than a ball field. I think largely now it's used for soccer. There's also baseball, backstop. I think those are the two sports that are played there largely.
And I'm sorry, how much do you have allocated for that?
I think it's $60,000 from POS and $20,000 from the-
That's correct, Daryl.
Okay. So the POS projects are 75% funded by the state's program and 25% funded by the city. So we'd be paying a quarter of the cost for that project. Those cost estimates were developed a long time ago, so, you know, once we go out to bid on this thing, we'll have a better sense of what they actually will be. The capital items, unless there's any questions on those, unless there's something special revenue I'm forgetting. There are some special revenue projects that are going to be largely managed by the HCD, even though they say Streetscape, Holton Lane is one. Maple Avenue, next CDBG phase is more of a design than a construction. The way we sort of envision this is when it's kind of design work, the planning office is largely takes the lead when it's, once the design's in place and it's ready to be constructed, then it comes over to Public Works and we do the construction aspects.
I just wanted to mention, in your agenda packet for this evening, there was a revised summary schedule for special revenue. It was just merely a matter of carrying over a figure for the fund balance, and there is a description of the various projects, so I just wanted to call that to your attention.
In terms of capital budget, a lot of the items that you'll see on there are ones that we've had, again, because this is a five-year program, or shows a five-year program, we've had them for some time. So it's the replacement of equipment that's reached the end of its useful life or has met the standard for the city for replacement. However, we do have several new items in the capital budget. The first one that you see is a bucket truck. We actually have a truck that we are intending to replace, so it would be in that way a replacement. However, what the staff has asked for, and I support their contention- However, what the staff has asked for and I support their contention is that we could be very much in need of and use a truck that has the ability to raise employees up to an 18, 20-foot level. The truck itself would be a normal flatbed truck, right behind the cab would be a collapsible arm that raises and allows it to elevate a staff person with hydraulic controls to, to reach a level of 18 or 20 feet. We don't have any of that equipment in the city currently. As a result, a lot of the needs that we have, when we have to get up high, we have to contract those out. Those kinds of things are some of the maintenance, tree pruning. We do end up handling things like placement of flags on the telephone poles in the Fourth of July, but the way that that ends up having to be done is not entirely a safe way and I'd like to get into a more organized way to do that. We could also use it for accessing gutter areas, other high-level maintenance, higher level maintenance that, that we, we need to get to. So it's been their recommendation that we replace that next truck with something that has that capacity. The other item that's again been on the capital budget for some time now is liquid chemical treatment. The idea is to convert one of our current trucks that uses a traditional salt spreader and sodium chloride or potassium chloride type granular salt mixed with sand, which is how we generally treat roads for snow and ice. The technology's been shifting to a liquid treatment for some time now in many parts of the country. They use that and I think DC has now begun a pretty extensive use of the liquid chemical treatment. So what we're taking a look at there is trying to try it out in our city. The idea with liquid treatment is you do use a different type of chemical, which has much less wear and tear on the vehicles itself, corrosion issues in terms of the spreaders and the rear of the truck. It's also a little less environmentally dangerous than the salt mixture that we use. And it serves its purpose in more of a pre-treatment sense. Generally now, when we're spreading salt and sand, it's usually as the snow falls or as the ice is forming. When you go to a liquid treatment program, you tend to get out ahead of it, basically trying to apply a layer of the liquid treatment before the conditions reach freezing or a snowstorm occurs. The next item, that's a new item for us, is the Tacoma Junction Lights. I think you're aware, we've lost several lights, one a couple of years ago that fell in, of its own accord, one, I guess, last, last fall that fell as a result of someone leaning on it. We've done an analysis of the poles and taken a look. We don't think we have any current hazards in those light poles, though they are fairly old. I, I think they predate me, so we're talking 20 years plus that those poles were installed. They're steel poles, which is not the direction that you go anymore with decorative lights. We'd be moving towards a fiberglass pole. They're also fairly, not horribly energy efficient, but they're not the, the high level of energy efficiency that we could then move into with a, a different type of light. We'd be making a recommendation that we move to the induction lighting and many of you are familiar with that lighting. It was recommended from us when we did the light study with, as part of the greenhouse gas reduction plan. So we'd move to a different type light and perhaps even lower the poles a bit so the amount of actual light on the street may be increased. The globes and the existing lights are very old, they're very yellow. The poles themselves are kind of gray and dingy looking and they're, they've seen their, they've seen their better days, they're in need of replacement. It's a fairly expensive process, there's 35 poles or 26 poles. I'm getting my junction and Old Town mixed up, one's got 36, one's got 20-something. So it'd be the replacement of those poles in the junction area. We haven't had any problems with the Laurel Avenue or Old Town lights. In fact, they're in the process of a lighting retrofit themselves. I don't know if anybody's noticed that, I wouldn't look myself. But at the recommendation of the police, we've converted, are converting those lights from a high-pressure sodium light to a metal halide light, which will be a wider, brighter light for the, the Old Town decorative poles. And the globes are being cleaned at the same time those lights are being installed, so there'll be some significant light increase in Laurel Avenue.
So will they be, I, I know Carroll Avenue just got new ones.
Yeah, it is.
Will they be more consistent with those?
Well, those lights in the 7100 block of Carroll, I mean, when we take a look at the junction lights, I'm not sure yet what process we'll need to follow. I'm sure Historic Tacoma will be involved, maybe even HPC in terms of determining which light style we move forward. Those, the ones in the junction now are double-headed-
Right.
-lights, whether or not we stay with that or we go to one like we've got in the 7100 block. It's, I don't have an opinion on it. I think it'll probably be a public process in terms of determining which light style we'd like to go with.
Okay, I, I was asking more about in Old Town.
Well, in Old Town, the lights will stay the same. We're just changing the, the innards of the light and cleaning the globes.
And so will they be more like the-
Oh, the light-
In the 7100 block of Carroll?
Yeah, the 7100 block is actually, I believe, an induction light, but I don't think you'll be able to tell by looking the difference between an induction and a metal halide light. They're both very white light, very bright light.
Okay.
Let's see, other new items in the CIP, my favorite topic, new facility design. We have had an architectural firm that specializes in public works design, back when the former public works director was here, take a look at that and talk to us a bit about what could or might be able to be done at the public works facility. So we have had some rough discussions and some rough outlines of some plans. Some of the issues that we have up there for any of you that haven't been there recently is, of course, we have a, an original 1950s, 1960s era building-
It's historic.
-made of cinder block. It's largely an uninsulated building in all its various forms. Several of the buildings were built by the employees as they got built. Most of the staff and the storage areas have no ceilings, so there's bare rafters. People are working in spaces that basically have walls and a fairly ugly, ugly ceiling. We have insulated where we can, but we haven't tried insulating the cinder block walls. One of the major problems is when the facility was built, we had much less equipment and the equipment that we had was smaller. Trash trucks were much, much smaller, dump trucks were much smaller, we had very fewer of them. So what you'll see when you come and look around our yard is that the trucks are parked in bays that they don't fit in anymore. Cabs extend outside of, of parking bays. A lot of equipment is uncovered because we don't have the covered space to allow it to be parked undercover. Ideally, you want all your equipment, especially when you have seasonal equipment like we do, to be undercover. It helps with rust, it helps with maintenance. So ideally, we'd like to have more covered storage for the various types of leaf ax trucks and, and other types of equipment. We have a significant problem on the site with drainage, just general site drainage issues. It wasn't designed in a, in a way that captures, collects, or treats any of the discharge. And we tend, we're kind of on a plateau, we're sort of down slightly from a slope and then it drops down significantly from us. And so anything that passes through our yard makes its way on down to Sligo Creek Parkway without any filtering or, or treatment. We probably add a significant load of pollutants to it as water washes through our yard. A new design would provide a better surface as well as give us opportunities for channeling water, collecting water, treating water that runs through the facility. The locker room and the shower facilities, most of the showers are no longer working due to the age of the pipes, corrosion, whatnot, so we have several, you know, basically areas that are unable to be used. They've been retrofitted and reworked and replumbed and they've exceeded their, their useful life. Many of the facilities are, have a heating system where it's hot water through pipes that are underground or within the building itself. And again, just due to age and corrosion and the fact that it's in uninsulated and exposed buildings, a lot of our heating systems don't work very well. In fact, the main administrative building, we had to take it off the boiler system because the, the line broke underneath the ground, underneath our paved lot and could no longer provide the hot water to heat the, heat the administrative staff area. So we have gone to a separate heat pump, electric heat pump to provide the, the heat for the administrative facility. So it's, there's several system problems there, there's a space problem there. I've been taking a look lately at some things that have been done in other public works facilities where they've not only, you know, improved their usefulness, but there's also great opportunities there. You've got a lot of flat space buildings, opportunities for water retention, green roofs, stormwater filtering systems, innovative heating and cooling systems, innovative lighting technology where you can use daylight rather than, you know, having the dark roof covers. I don't know whether we'd be able to, you know, get close to any of that, but it's certainly something worth taking a look at as we look at the site. One of the things that we did before, years ago, said where else could we be other than where we are? And in Built Out Tacoma Park, we really couldn't identify a location for the public works facility other than where it is. So I think what we, the task before us now is to try to improve our use of the site, both for the surrounding neighbors as well for, as well as for the 30-some employees that work there.
So you're suggesting that there might be an alternative for the mulch pile that wouldn't spread the odor across the neighborhood?
Haven't found a place for that either. You know, we try to move it out as fast as we get it in. Our goal, of course, is, you know, grind it, stockpile it, and then start delivering it as soon as we can and, and empty our stockpile before the next fall's collection. So, yeah. A couple of the other items in the CIP that's related to facilities, there's a replacement for the front gate. We'd actually like to move towards an electronic gate that's operable with the current employee ID cards. The gas pump system that we're having installed will be accessed and usable by the proxy card. So there's also a, was in this year's budget, though I believe the funds are going to be moved into '08, a security system for public works, a basic lock system that we have here in, in most of the municipal building where you use proximity cards to unlock doors. So we'll be moving in that direction up at public works as well for about 13 to 15 doors. There's also an item in the CIP for next year for a security system, basically to add cameras to supplement the security measures, including the gate and the, and the proxy card door locks. In the past, we've been the unfortunate recipients of several significant thefts. It's been impossible to tell whether or not they were in-house jobs or outside jobs. So we're hoping that these measures basically would enable us to do better identification of, of theft as well as reduce the, reduce the likelihood for that to happen. Couple other items that are not public works related specifically but are in the capital budget and I thought I'd address, I don't know if the library talked about their exterior lighting for the rear lot and library. It was actually a request that came to us from the library themselves. They're concerned about the, what they see as the lack of lighting in the rear of the building and the Philadelphia side of the building to the rear lot. During the original construction for the community center, at least one parking lot light was removed as a result of the construction. So it has made that area more dark. And I think just in general, there's a need to add some lighting in the area, so there's an item that would add some exterior lights to the Philly side of the library and extend back maybe a light or two on the parking lot side. And then lastly, there's an item for roofing for the council chamber and the old third floor. You probably recall that those items were looked at when TRG offered, we worked with TRG to re-roof various sections of the library and a couple of the other areas of the city that had significantly failing roof structures and a lot of leakage problems. At that point in time, they evaluated those structures, they recommended replacement. Myself and the staff took a look at those reports and thought that we could do repairs that would extend the lives of those roofs and, and kind of hold us over for a few years so we wouldn't have to take on the expense of those roof replacements at the time. We've did some, done some extensive repairs in the third floor of the old building. They have not worked well, we're still having water intrusion issues. Basically, it's the belief of the current facility supervisor that that membrane is just too far gone and, and it's his recommendation that we replace the roof on the old side of the, the third floor. We haven't had infiltration issues in this council chamber, but the roofs are all of similar vintage and similar age and so it's our recommendation, as long as we're replacing one, this is the only last roof that the building has. It has had leaks in the past, we have done some maintenance on it, seems to be holding, but that could change at any point. So it's our recommendation that we just update all the roofs so that we have all new roof surfaces on every roof level of this building. So that item is, is what you see there on the capital budget. I think that's it related to public works.
Can I just bring up a question about, you know, we keep complaining about the air handlers. I mean, are, would they be something that we would, should be taking a look at?
Well, yes, we, we should. I'm hoping with the new facility supervisor that we begin to do sort of an analysis of numerous systems in the building, various components of the HVAC system would be that. It's a, it's a little bit of a catch-22 in the old sections of the building with the current air handlers. They are maintainable, they will work, they are, were designed differently in the era that they were developed and ones are now, so they're noisier, they're louder, but they are, are working. So we don't have, we don't have a problem that, you know, they won't work, so we have to replace them.
Because one of them failed at one point. I mean, we had to replace one of the old air handlers for reasons that had nothing to do with the new building and I assume the other ones are about that same age.
They're all that same age. I'm not aware of any operation problems in the existing air handling units, but again, my information may be outdated and may need to be updated. I'm hoping that we can do an evaluation of that.
Okay.
It was a decision kind of largely made when construction went, underwent. We, we made a decision to stick with the existing infrastructure in the old section of the building.
It reminds me, and it probably has nothing to do with you or the public works department, but, you know, when we built the new community center, we ended up with these freestanding air conditioning units all over the upstairs. Is that a permanent feature of this community center or?
We hope not. When the construction of the third floor in particular, the old section of the floor, actually an air handler was removed in that area. And it was the design of the architect that the existing system could handle the cooling load of that area. We've determined that to not be the case. The facility supervisor has added some fans and motors to the system to try to enhance the air output. We, we have had a company in to do the balancing that was required as part of the original contract and that was just recently done. And we had significant reductions in actual air output from what the system was designed to. 1,600 cubic feet was producing 1,000 cubic feet, those types of orders of magnitude. So the recommendation from the folks that he talked to was to add motors and, and add fans to increase the output as a way to address the, the cooling issue. That's what we attempted last week, we've been monitoring it this week. The information that I just got today is that it's not working. So the portable units have come back out to try to maintain some staff comfort levels in that old section of the building on the third floor. I need to talk to the facility supervisor to see what he's finding or if he had to turn the system off for some reason because there was some issues. If it's working at capacity and not providing the cooling, we're going to have to take a look at adding probably a rooftop unit and tapping into the existing ductwork and that would be a $50,000 to $70,000 project.
And is that budgeted in your-
No, that's not budgeted.
Any other questions? Thank you. How about Stormwater?
Stormwater. We are happy to inform you that we have started an upgrade of GIS as I reported earlier. There's a $5,000 in the budget on the subcontract site for upgrading, you know, software to include that work anything that would enable us to edit the data as the consultant or gathering data. That means the dimensions of the inlet structure and pipes. So that's the first item on there. TV inspection, which we would propose to do next year would probably be the last segment of the three-year cycles, that we have put that as an item there. put that as an item there. And there has been a tremendous amount of erosion on Mississippi Avenue on Compton branch, which we have a vendor giving us an estimate of $43,000. And as soon as the state give us a permit to work there, we're intending to destabilize the banks of Compton branch and affect that repair. The Sligo Creek repair is intended to be, there's a pipe from Old Carroll which runs under Sligo Creek Parkway. And it's apparently has collapsed. It's a clay pipe. And that item is for repairing that segment of the pipe which is under Sligo Creek again. We already have an estimate for lining the pipe along the Carroll Avenue, which is also in a bad shape. Columbia Avenue is where the fire station would be discharging their runoff and the system though. And there is two eight-inch pipes there that are, one of them is completely collapsed, the other one is at half capacity. So we need to upgrade that. We're hoping to be able to do that with $30,000. These are the repair and the maintenance items that we have put together. And the capital of, we are working to get two rain gardens installed on Spring Park and address some of the internal erosion as well as the drainage issues. On Albany and Buffalo, this is a longstanding project. There is a segment of the pipe that is corrugated pipe under Buffalo Avenue, I believe. And that needs to be changed because it's already clogged away. Also, there's 200 linear feet of new pipe that we intend to install to improve the drainage in that area. The Cleveland Avenue filtration is a continuation of two rain gardens and a terminal trench that we have already, today we've got a contract signed, hoping to finish it by the end of this fiscal year. This concludes our capital outlay and subcontract budget. In order to get some plans for Albany and Buffalo and Albany Avenue, we have that engineering services item, about $5,000. This is a brief review of what next year budget entails.
Are there any questions on stormwater?
One of the other things that we'll be able to do, like we've been able to do in the past few years, is a lot of minor repairs that aren't in here. We sort of deal with them as they come up, drainage problems, small inlet repairs and whatnot. So there'll be, you know, a significant number of additional small projects that will happen citywide as Ali identifies them or people report them to us or we find them through the TV inspection. So this is sort of, including the big ticket, large planned items, there'll be numerous small maintenance items that we do throughout the year.
And I'm glad to see us moving to more things like rain gardens and other alternative ways of dealing with stormwater. Any other questions?
I just want to make one comment or to share something with the council. As you, I think, are aware, we have had, for whatever reason, extreme difficulty in terms of having residents comply and pay their stormwater management fees in a timely fashion. That has basically occupied a considerable amount of staff time and continues to do so, though I think the situation has somewhat improved. I did want to share with the council that the initial statements that were sent out, payment was due, I believe, by March 30th. We will be sending out next week essentially a final notice on that because there is a point at which it's just counterproductive to keep sending numerous notices. So that will basically be reflected as a final notice. Ms. Brooks and I earlier this year did have some discussions with the county finance department, which was facilitated through the county executive office staff, about exploring whether or not, even if there was, you know, some minimal cost involved, whether or not we could get our stormwater management fee placed on the county, the property tax bills issued by the county. Obviously, that was really not feasible. They wanted to have some, for this year it was not feasible. They wanted to have some internal discussions to see what might be involved in terms of programming their systems. You know, we'll continue that, I think, later this year after they've had a chance to review it. But I think that would probably provide a much more efficient way of doing this. But a lot of our property is residential and when you're talking about $48, which is what you're collecting on a single-family home, by the time you even have staff time involved in terms of preparing one mailing and, you know, some of the data entry, you've almost exhausted exactly what you're getting in the fee. So that'll be something that we'll continue to keep the council apprised of as our discussions with the county move forward.
And if it were on the county's property tax bill, would that mean that for people with mortgages, it would be handled by their mortgage company?
Correct.
Okay. Any, anything else? Well, thank you. We appreciate it. All right. Non-departmental.
Much of this budget, I think, the council's probably familiar with. And there's a fairly detailed description in your budget binder of what's included. Some of the personnel cost-related items that are included in non-departmental include our employee recognition program, which includes merit pay increases, some of our service award programs, things of that nature. It also includes a supplemental payment that the city makes to the state retirement system. One item I did want to call to the council's attention, I believe I mentioned this the other evening, in terms of personnel costs, is that prior to this year, at the proposed budget for FY08, workers' compensation costs were budgeted in the individual departments. And part of the thinking at that time was that we actually had, Wayne, I always get this terminology wrong. It's like a modification factor where the worker's comp cost was actually tied to each specific job. So that kind of made sense. Over time, that has since changed and basically we just get sort of a lump-sum insurance figure, if you will. So for the first time in the proposed budget for FY08, the cost of workers' compensation insurance would basically be aggregated and reflected in the non-departmental budget. So as you kind of look through, trying to compare FY07 to FY08, that is a pretty significant difference to the tune of about $231,000. One of the other major items in non-departmental is the cost for other types of insurance. These are including liability, property insurance coverage, auto insurance coverage. Wayne, is there any other type of insurance coverage I'm missing that shows up in?
The environmental liability insurance and the bonding of the various employees, finance managers.
I guess the public officials' coverage.
Public official liabilities all covered.
One of the other items that shows up under services and charges is the cost of operating the day labor site on New Hampshire Avenue, as we've discussed previously with the council. And some of you heard this morning at the semi-annual meeting of the CDA, Prince George's County is slowly moving forward. I think we're trying to make every effort to actually get a more permanent and more suitable facility located in Prince George's County. They are working with Casa de Maryland. That has been very slow-going for a variety of reasons. The proposed budget does assume that the city will continue to operate its temporary site on New Hampshire Avenue throughout fiscal year '08. Obviously, we all hope that that does not turn out to be the case. But I think based on what we're, we've been seeing and just our kind of worst fear, that may happen. That's a better safe than sorry. I did want to mention to the council, and I will get it in your box tomorrow, is that at, shortly after 5:00 this evening, I received an email from a representative of Casa de Maryland making a request that the city consider a financial contribution towards the operation of the workers' center in Prince George's County to the tune of $50,000. I will get their written request to you and I'm not asking for any discussion of that regarding this evening, but obviously that's something as we move forward in the budget process. I will at least need some direction from the council so that I can provide a response back to Casa de Maryland. What I will probably do tomorrow is just notify them that I did receive it, make sure they are aware of how far we are along in our budget process. But I have asked the council to have some discussion of their request during the reconciliation process.
Yeah, it would be reconciliation.
The, as the council is aware, there are two kind of contingency accounts, if you will, that are required by the charter. One is the half percent general contingency account. And as we talked about the other evening, there is a requirement in the charter to maintain kind of a 2% of revenues above and beyond that. It's, we commonly refer to it as the unappropriated reserve. That is not required to be budgeted as an expenditure, but that's been the city's practice, just to make sure that we are in compliance with that charter provision. Both of those contingency accounts are budgeted as expenditures in the non-departmental section of the budget. We talked about this the other night. I would certainly be happy to answer any questions the council has, but we do, essentially during the course of the fiscal year, towards the end, we make a contribution to the equipment replacement reserve. Technically, the way that is handled, it's just sort of a transfer, if you will, between the different types of fund balance. But just for disclosure purposes, we do reflect it in the budget document as an outright expenditure, given the significant amount of money that we're talking about. In FY07, the amount of that contribution to the equipment replacement reserve is $300,000. My proposed budget does reflect an increase in that amount to the tune of $500,000. As we talked about Monday night, I think Ms. Berthwaite referred to this evening, one of the things that we're continually trying to do is see what has not been taken into account in the equipment replacement reserve or the facility's improvement. And as she indicated, for whatever reason, the bridges have not been included in that. So I do think that it is something that we need to make sure that we're kind of shoring up, that we are preparing for large expenditures that might be coming at some point in the future so that we don't get hit with unexpected expenditure and have trouble coming up with the cash for it. There is one specific item I did want to spend some time talking about, which is the city supplement to the homeowner property tax credit. But before I move on to that, I wanted to see if there's any other questions the council has about the non-departmental budget. Any questions?
I'm not seeing any.
I apologize for, included in the additional information that was distributed this evening is a fairly lengthy memo, and I won't certainly bore you with going through all those details this evening. But it's on the, the local supplement to the state homeowner property tax credit. Especially for those council members who maybe are not familiar with that program, I know some of you are, but maybe not everyone is. I wanted to try to provide you with some background information on how the program works. The reason I wanted to spend some time this evening, I'll be brief about it, is to bring it to your attention, is that the city has made some changes over the years. If you flip back to, it's actually the very last page of your additional information packet, you can kind of see what I'm talking about. Recognizing that property values were rising and that a number of our residents were experiencing difficulty handling that burden, the council, especially in the last few years, has made changes in the city's local supplement. This is a state program. By law, the city has had the option of providing a supplement to that. The county also provides a supplement. I tried to provide you some information in regard to their program. But in fiscal year 2003, the city's local supplement was 15% of the applicable state credit. It was that same figure in 2004. In 2005, the city council made a decision to raise the percentage to 30%. And in 2006, the city council authorized an increase to 50%. Included in the memo in your packet is an indication of the number of recipients for each of those years. What you will also see, though, to the right, is basically the dramatic increase we have been seeing in the program cost. And I want just to spend a little bit talking about that. Certainly, it's been a significant increase in the city's overall budget. And I think it's appropriate for the council to actually, I think, for staff actually to make you aware of that and for you to perhaps have some discussion about that if you deem appropriate because it's sort of been increasing by default without a lot of discussion within the last year. And kind of go through this, and let's say I apologize for getting the memo to you late, but I'll be perfectly candid, as Ms. Brooks can certainly testify, as well as members of her staff. It's a very complicated issue and it's really taken me a good chunk of this week to try to kind of look through the information that the finance department had in its files, to try to do a little research on my own, to talk to county officials and to talk to state officials, to find out in a little bit more detail what exactly is happening, given how fast the cost has been increasing. It's really a combination of several factors. One is certainly the decision made by the city council to try to provide a higher benefit to our residents. We saw the major jump last fiscal year in the payments. And in trying to sort through the data, kind of what I learned at that point is, in fiscal year 2006, there was actually a difference between the county and the state requirements. Basically, at that point in time, the state increased, had a level of its assessed valuation was set at $150,000. The county at that time had an assessed value level of $300,000. There was also some issues going on in looking through the reports, and Ms. Brooks' staff had followed up on this last year. But we used to get reports from the state that would show the credit that they were giving. And obviously, we used that to do our calculations. When we got the report last year, it showed two different columns. Ms. Brooks' staff appropriately followed up. And the state basically kind of implied it was just sort of a different formatting. And looking back at that now, and I know that there was some discussion back in July, I think Mr. Hoss was the acting city manager in my absence at that time. But what it appears last year is that actually what we did is we matched the state and the county credit. Because of the way the data came in from the state, that's what it appeared that we should be doing. But I did want to make sure the council was aware that what actually happened in fact last year was we matched both credits. When you look at the proposed data, it's the second to the last paragraph on your memo, what we're seeing this year, and I can assure the council this, is the pure cost of matching the state credit. The state essentially brought its parameters roughly in accordance with what the county did. So the state monitored, actually administers the county credit. What the county basically does is have the state see what someone is entitled to. And if there's a difference between their parameters and the state, they sort of make up that difference, if you will. At effective of July 1st of 2006, which is the current fiscal year, the state made a decision to increase the assessed valuation that it took into account in calculating its credit. They raised it up to $300,000, which is now the same level as the county. So when you, we looked at the list that we just got recently, the vast majority of our residents will not be getting a county credit. They'll be getting a state credit. And so you're seeing the dollar amount sort of equalize out between last year and where we stand today. Interestingly enough, there are some differences, not in the actual kind of household income levels, but the way the credit is calculated. And it's included in your memo. It's a little difficult to explain, but it's sort of a ratio, if you will, between the person's income and how the credit is calculated. There is a slight difference between how the state considers that and how the county treats it. So we actually have a few of our folks in looking at the actual data sheet from the state who do not qualify for the state credit, but qualify for some level of county credit. And it's because of the way both programs work. So anyway, I guess you can go into a little more detail in the memo. I know it's kind of overly complicated. It's basically been about to make my head burst trying to figure it out this week, but I think I finally got it. I mentioned this several weeks ago to the council, but we have $75,000 in the current year budget based on the figures that we've received. It would require an additional allocation of almost $66,000 at the 50% supplement level. So I guess that's one issue I wanted to bring to your attention. That's just for the current year. And clearly, what this experience is showing is I have $110,000 in the proposed budget for FY08 based on kind of the data we have for the current year. That will likely be insufficient.
Do you have an estimate for the fiscal '08 at?
Yeah, I tried to spend some time there talking to the state to see if they were planning to make any changes. Apparently, they didn't make any changes in their program for about 10 years, so they consider it unlikely. I know the county is making some changes, basically dealing with senior citizens. That's not something at this point that we match. I think the only driving factor that I see that could continue escalating this for next year would be just the mere fact that property values are continuing to rise as reassessments occur. My guess would probably be somewhere in, in the range, I mean, based on this year's figure, probably $50,000.
So you're thinking that we probably would need another $50,000 to cover FY08?
Right. That's assuming that the council wants to keep the local supplement level at 50%. So I apologize for saying for bringing this to you. It's really late in the evening and I know it's a very dry subject, but I think it is something that warrants some discussion just because of the something that warrants some discussion just because of the dollars that we're now talking about.
Actually, I don't think it's a dry subject. I think it's actually one of the most important things that we do, and I actually don't look at this the way I do other programs that we spend money on. This is actually the safety net under our basic property tax program. This is what enables people who are low-income and who own homes in our community to stay in our community. I, actually, I am, I'm not happy that it's having a negative impact on the budget, but I am happy that the number of people who are getting credits under this program is increasing as rapidly as it is, because that shows that it's doing what it needs to do to cover increasing property taxes. And I think that this is an extremely important thing that we do, and I think we should keep funding it at the level that we're funding it, and if it, it's not going to take more money unless we're pulling in more money for property taxes, because the two are linked. And so I think this is the way that we keep the increases in the property taxes from driving the poorest residents past, I mean, we're not even talking about poor, we're talking about, you know, lower-middle-income residents out of our community.
I think Mayor Porter articulated it very well, but I just want to make sure that the underlying assumption is correct, and since you feel at this point that after getting your headache, that you just about have it, I would like some reassurance that these credits are going to the people who most need it in our community.
Yeah. Obviously, to some degree, that's a value judgment, but the criteria, just in very brief, is obviously, someone has to own or have a legal interest in property, it has to be their principal residence. The net worth of the household has to be less than $200,000, that excludes the value of the property. I neglected to mention, I'm glad Councilmember Siemens asked this question, another change that's occurred in the last year is they now exclude any kind of, any monies held in an individual retirement account or in a qualified retirement savings plan from the valuation, if you will, of household income, and the combined gross household income has to be $60,000 or less. In looking through the reports, you know, I think sometimes there's a, when you go back in time, a lot of these programs used to be called circuit breaker programs, and they were basically geared strictly towards the elderly. In looking at the list of those residents in the city who would appear to qualify for benefits this year, truthfully, I saw someone who was in their, you know, early 30s, ranging all the way up to folks in their 80s. It's a very broad spectrum of the community at this point, probably because both the mayor and Councilmember Siemens are alluding to, you're really dealing with the cost of housing more than anything else, and that's really a factor that's impacting folks throughout the community regardless of their age.
But the resident has to apply for this, it doesn't just happen automatically?
That's correct. We do, I know we put some notices in the newsletter, what, by practice, what happens is, once someone has applied once, the state automatically does send them another application. But you are correct, it is an automatic, it's not an automatic process.
Right, and I think we have done some additional outreach in recent years that also may be recent, the amounts have gone up.
I think the outreach has helped, and I also think the fact that as property values have continued to rise, it's becoming much more of a burden for a lot of folks.
Right.
Colleen and members?
Well, I followed you all the way until the point where you started talking about, sorry, how last year, we gave a credit to both the county and the state. You lost me there.
Okay.
And what would be most helpful to me is, as a follow-up, if you could provide an example of a tax bill, so that I could understand exactly how that works, and how that, particularly, how the double part of it works.
Actually, it's not a double. My understanding is that the county calculates what tax credit you get under the county program, then they look at the tax credit you get under the state program. If the county is higher, then they give you the difference between what you got under the state and under the county, is that right?
Yeah, in essence, I think Councilmember Clay may be right, that maybe having an example might be helpful, just to kind of walk you through the numbers. I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
So it's not double counting, you're getting the full amount of what the county would have given?
I think what Councilmember Clay is alluding to, as I indicated, is typically, when we would get a report back from the state, it would show the state, I'm losing my mind, homeowner property tax credit, it wasn't labeled state credit, it would just say credit, and it would be one column. Last year, when the staff got the report, suddenly, it was broken into two separate columns, and it would say state and county, and we'd never seen that before. We then called the state, and basically, the state said, kind of indicated it was sort of like just a different reporting thing, provided us with a report with one column. What I'm saying is, as I was digging into this this year and trying to have a better understanding, because we got another report this year with two columns, and this time, we almost had no one getting a county credit, you know, it started kind of leading me to think, what exactly happened last year, and why are we here? I am, and I think this is what Councilmember Clay is alluding to, and I just want to make sure I do understand your question, and I think she is correct. We not only matched the 50% of the state credit last year, we matched 50% of the county credit.
But it's not a double counting thing, because people say somebody whose county credit was $100, and they got 80 from the state, they'd only get 20 from the county.
But last year, what we did was, we matched both, so we double paid.
No, we didn't double pay.
Yes, we did.
No, because...
Yes, we did.
No, we didn't. Well, I think it depends how you're counting double payment. Typically, the program is, I think in the city has been construed, is matching the state credit only, and I think that's when, as I watch four of you down the dais and three of you using the terminology, I think that's what you're alluding to, is we did not just match the state credit, we matched the county. I think the mayor's point is also correct, which is that in order to determine, there were different, very different eligibility parameters or payment parameters last year between the state and the county. For instance, if I had a home last year, I made less than $60,000 a year, and my home was valued at $300,000, my assessed valuation was, the state would have calculated its credit based on the $150,000 figure, because that was their upper limit. The county would then take the second $150,000, and it would provide a benefit based on its parameters. And I'm still going to give you your numbers, Councilmember Clay, I just wanted to make sure.
I'm following a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't remember whether we had any specific discussion of which credit we were going to match, but I do remember we had some very specific discussion of the fact that the county had more generous parameters, and it was the county credit we wanted to match. And so if we match both the state and the county, we are in effect matching the county.
Yes.
And that, I think, was our intention, even though we didn't realize that they were going to be provided in that format.
The language the city has traditionally used in enacting legislation on this has referred to the state credit, and I think it's because it's only been...
The county credit only existed for a couple of years.
The county credit has actually been around, I think it's because last year, the county had so dramatically changed its requirements from the state that it became more of an issue.
If I can just make my comment, I think I can wrap up that conversation and my point, and we get to the end of it. I think what we had going on was kind of two separate pieces leading to the situation last year where we had the hybrid, and I think now we've gotten to the point where, with the state having changed their eligibility requirements, we're now, everybody's back in sync again, but what we had was our desire to raise our amount, and the only method we had to do that was to raise our percentage match for the state.
Correct.
To go up to the legal maximum of 50%. And part of the reason for doing that was that the state hadn't changed their program and their eligibility requirements. Once they started changing their eligibility requirements, and they also had the county program anticipating that and changing theirs a year in advance, it got us to where we wanted to go, but we had essentially the double influence of raising our percentage and changing the eligibility, which caused the large change. Now that everybody has kind of gone through those phase changes, we're where we thought we were going to be, and the amounts are going to stay high.
Yeah, and I'm saying, I don't want to belabor this, I guess, just because it has been such a dramatic increase in the cost, and I'm not bringing this up because there's any value judgment on my part, but I think there are very few other aspects of the budget where we have seen such a dramatic increase in the program cost, and I think it at least warranted bringing this to your attention, I think we've brought it up sort of as we found ourselves, as we did last year, as we're finding ourselves this year, as we are going to with FY08, we seem to be finding ourselves running short, and I think, obviously, staff has tried to do a lot of research to make sure we understood what was happening. Just wanted to make sure you were aware that was happening, because obviously, it's kind of a zero-sum game when you only have so much revenue, and it becomes a matter of council's priorities in terms of where you want to put those funds. I would mention, and this will be my last comment, I promise, everyone's looking really tired, and I think, but Councilmember Williams just alluded to something, the way that the law was previously structured, the city could, did not have the same opportunity as a county did to determine its eligibility requirements. In talking to the city attorney's office today, because, you know, trying to work through some issues, Lynda Perlman did advise me that that, at the push of the city of Rockville, that has now changed. The city does have the possibility or the opportunity to set its own eligibility requirements, whether you wanted to match the county's, but your only way of dealing with that is not just the local supplement percentage anymore. I'm not advocating that, but that is something that is very recent.
But that increases the overhead of management.
Yes. Well, actually, one of the things I'm going to explore, and I just kind of ran out of time, because I was too busy trying to figure it out to really do too much more, but in looking through some of the documentation that I pulled off the state website, it does appear that, or at least it appeared to me, that perhaps the city of Rockville and the city of Gaithersburg, who also have similar programs, may actually have the state administer their programs rather than what we're doing, which is getting a report and then having to cut a check. I'm not positive about that, but that's what some of the language appeared to say. I will be following up on that issue with the state, but that might be an opportunity for us to, you know, still give the benefit but not have to spend quite the staff time that we do this time of year.
But if we do that, can we also match the county credit?
Uh, yes.
If we have the state administer it?
I believe so.
Okay.
I guess, just one thing, I just want to double check with the council, and if you want to think about it, we do have the report, Ms. Brooks' staff has done the calculations to issue checks to the approximately 169 residents who appear to qualify this year under the parameters the council has previously set. There is a budget shortfall, we have $75,000 in the budget, that's, we have a shortfall to meet that payment of about $66,000.
From this year's budget?
From this year's budget. Obviously, that's not the kind of thing that we cut checks on without discussing with the council. At that dollar amount, I would certainly want to bring a budget amendment to the council, even if it's merely to formalize what we're doing. I say, if you're comfortable telling me to go ahead, Ms. Brooks can certainly and her staff proceed with issuing those checks, if you'd like an opportunity to think about it. Obviously, for us not to issue checks in the rough amount of $141,000, that would require some direction from the council, since there is an ordinance on the books at this point, setting forth a local supplement percentage of 50%.
And that's an average check of $832.
Yeah, actually, I think there's much, I mean, that's, in looking at the dollar amounts, I mean, and certainly, we can just go give you a rough through the report, that's the average, but it really ranges all over the place, quite frankly.
I would imagine that there's probably some older people living in houses that they bought 40 years ago that are probably not worth a million dollars, but it's still just their house.
Right. And obviously, the assessed value is capped at $300,000 for calculation purposes, but like I say, if the council wants to think about this and give me some direction when we meet Monday, that's fine, but I did want to let you know that at this point, I have advised Ms. Brooks not to go ahead and proceed with cutting those checks until we had an opportunity to at least talk about it and to make sure you were aware of the impact on this year's budget.
Yeah, I, speaking for myself, I understand what the impact is, but I think that this is really critical to keeping a safety net under our tax, our property tax program.
I agree, we need a budget amendment.
Yep.
I'm behind the mayor all the way.
Yeah, unless you change the ordinance. I mean, if the council is comfortable, as long as, you know, I'd like to go ahead and try to get the funding, truthfully, in the hands of those people who may need it as soon as possible.
Yes, I think that's a good idea.
Unless there's an objection, I'll go ahead and have Ms. Brooks and her staff work on getting those checks out, and we'll be bringing the budget amendment forward, you know, probably sometime within the next few weeks.
And I have a procedural question. The procedural question is, if the council decides to maintain the program exactly as we do now, will we match both of those? Then the, that will, then the additional $50,000 won't be a reconciliation item, because it will have to be in the budget, is that right?
I will put it on the reconciliation list primarily, because that's how we sort of get from point A to point B, when we're going from my proposed budget to the budget that's appearing.
But in order to not...
You would have to...
Put that into the budget, we would have to change the law.
You would have to change your policy, that's correct.
Okay, I understand.
Okay. That's it, I think I've worn you out sufficiently.
Okay, is there anything else? If there's nothing else, we're adjourned.
Thank you.